Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Thank you for being here. Welcome to our regular meeting on February 11th. For the record, it is 1:07. And your call roll, please.
May I?
President.
Ms. Ms. Mariposa?
Here.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Here.
Ms. Ms. Brown?
President. Melinda, would you give us some pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mean standing, just offer a brief moment of silence for all those in our community, and just that our community will continue to grow and further expand and know the value of working together. Thank you. Council have approved the agenda. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, if we get other presentations, move B to A. And then, after the Paseo, we have two more presentations. One would be Mother's Day. Mr. Grant Correia, representative of his from DMC, will be here. And the second one would be for Solar Fest. I believe I sent out an email to the council in regards to this. Okay. And these are just presentation items, correct?
No, actually, just presentations.
Yes.
Five to ten each.
Yes. Okay. Move to the appreciation, Mr. Mayor. As amended?
As amended.
Motion and a second? Further discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Mariposa?
Yes.
Okay, and approval of minutes, January 13, 2015, regular meeting minutes. Council? Vote okay. And motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Mariposa?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes. January 16, 2015, special meeting minutes. Vote to approve. Second. And a second? Any further discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Mariposa?
Yes.
January 26, 2015, work-study meeting minutes. Council? Vote for the vote. And a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Call for the vote.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Mariposa?
Yes.
January 27, 2015, work-study meeting minutes. Council? Vote to approve. Second. And a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Pata?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Mariposa?
Yes.
So, thank you. So, we'll move on to awards of recognition, Employee of the Month. The one is called Amy. It's always great when we can honor one of our own, the talents.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We're here this afternoon to recognize our Employee of the Month for February. The employee that has been selected is Sergeant Janie Davis. Sergeant Davis has been with the Towne House as an employee for a total of four years. She was hired as a police cadet in 2009 and graduated from the Department of Public Safety Academy in 2010. She then left work for the State of New Mexico DPS Special Investigations Division and then came back to work with us here at the Towne House Police Department. We're very happy to have her. She does an excellent job. She has terrific working relationships with all of her coworkers, employees. We received numerous compliments on her interactions with the public and citizens of the Towne House. And so, we are very happy to present this award to her today. And also, in addition to that, she gets a gift certificate and a day of annual week. I mean, sorry, no, not annual week, a day of personal week. Thank you so much.
I just want to say how humbled and honored I am to get this because there's so many hard-working employees here in the town. So, it's a great honor to get this. Thank you.
So, then we'll go ahead and go on to other presentations. We'll go on to letter A, the tree lighting. Or B?
Tree lighting.
The tree lighting, yeah. Tree lighting expenses.
Sorry, I just know that he likes to be able to hand out documents.
That makes me feel so proud of Rob. I hope that opportunity. Good afternoon. Mayor Burrow, councilmembers, Congressman Peralta-Han. Mr. Bellis, thank you for this opportunity to go over the tree lighting and what it involved. I'm going to read right from what you've been, you know, beginning. "I'd like to take this opportunity to outline the Towne Plaza Tree Lighting Project, its inception, design criteria, procurement procedures, labor requirements, and lighting ceremony for your perusal. I am including an invoice and separate cover to show costs associated with the project as well. Towne Events was asked to develop a plan to wrap the 10 major trees, which outline the town plaza, in conjunction with the 2014 Plaza Holiday Decorating Activities. The Towne House's ongoing annual display included wrapping the Overgreen Tree and several smaller trees in holiday lights, as well as displaying holiday ornaments and other visual displays. I estimated that 50,000 lights or 1,000 strings of lights would be required to adequately achieve this spectacular visual effect. The lights were purchased by the Towne House from Riverland Ace Hardware at a discount rate of $574 per 50 light string. Each string was approximately 12 feet in length with lights spread at two inches apart." And I say that because I looked at all of the different opportunities and found that this would be the most advantageous for what we were trying to achieve. "The use of LEDs allowed for more lights with less electrical consumption. A single color, full white, was decided upon as it could serve other events throughout the year. The strings were traditional in the sense that they could plug into each other end-to-end, thus allowing for consistent flow or required minimal amount of power connections. With the assistance of the town's electrician, we were able to upgrade the existing circus to allow for one connection for two to three trees. The work required the use of several ladders, one boom lift, and two boom trucks. Towne Events provided the ladders and the hand tools necessary. The Towne House, along with Kit Carson Electric, provided the trucks and crews to place the lights. The installation took five days to complete. The first two days were spent picking up the product, power cords, cables, etc., and free assembling the lights for the boom crews. Three of those days were with the Towne House crew and one KCE crew were onsite. On two of those days, we had another KCE crew. The Towne House crew was available for approximately six hours per day and the Kit Carson crews available for 10. There was an approximate total of 136 man-hours for boom and crews. The Kit Carson crew were provided free of charge from Luis Reyes and Kit Carson Electric. As of this writing, they have not received the values for the Towne House or the Kit Carson involvement. On the day of Plaza Lighting Ceremony, Towne Events provided lighting and assisted with sound reinforcement for the stage and for the activities on the plaza. We also set up an ongoing music for the remainder of the holiday season out of the kiosk utilizing a Pandora account. Towne Events was not contracted for the project, but instead, I was asked to track hours and expenses, which I did and provided to the town for review. In the course of the project, Towne Events rented a trailer locally, purchased materials locally, provided 65 hours of labor, ladders and tools, sound equipment and stage lighting. My invoice reflected out-of-pocket expenses and labor and also reflected the sound and lighting equipment being donated. I expected the entire invoice to become a donation from me and was gratefully surprised when Mr. Mayor yourself and Mr. Bellis contributed $1,000 each to offset my expenses, thus allowing me to provide an overall donation of $1,515.29 in equipment and labor. As we look toward the coming year and start to analyze and develop budgets for upcoming and ongoing projects, I'd like to provide brief financial outline for the 2015 Plaza Holiday Activities. This assumes installing a similar lighting package with improved upgrades. As you can see, I'm suggesting a $10,000 investment in LED and pixelated lights. And what that means is currently, we put LEDs on the trees. Pixelated lights allow for multi-color LEDs to be programmed from a computer and create animation, plays to music or other types of input. And, believe it or not, it's a fairly inexpensive project to put together. Pixelated lights are not as expensive as you would think. Plaza white sound speakers, amplifier, and sound source, $1,500. And what that would be is an upgrade to the existing system to allow for just more professional sound system to provide holiday music throughout the plaza. This year, we were able to focus on the kiosk, which unfortunately, at different levels, in different places in the plaza, the level would be blaring and be very soft in other areas. And what we'd like to be able to do is just make that all one even sound system. Onstage, sound and lighting for onstage for the Plaza Lighting Ceremony, $1,000. Design, coordination, and installation, $4,000. Boom vehicles and crews, approximately $120 an hour. Based on what we used this year, I'm going to say it's going to be about $12,000. But that's an approximation of cost. I think I'm pretty close. I don't know the Towne House numbers, but I think I'm pretty close for the Kit Carson crew. Of course, we don't expect them to charge us next year as this, again, is just for your perusal. And then miscellaneous, generally, on a bid like this, I'd put a 15% who-knows-what's-going-to-happen kind of cost in there. So, the total for next year could be in the neighborhood of $32,000. All the work on the project, those who visited Towne and those who saw it from afar via social media and news accounts, were thrilled with the outcome of the project. The plaza truly became a winter wonderland. It was a pleasure to serve you and townspeople on this project. I look forward to providing my services in the future. Again, Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, I appreciate your help and input on those days. And that's all I have. I hope, and if you have any questions, Mr. Peralta-Han.
Counselor? Mitch, the current lights that are up?
Yes.
The guarantee station is to add to that?
Yes. What I'd like to be able to do is to provide an outline of what else can be done. In talking with people at the time that were doing the installation, there's some favorable comments on using the size of some of the buildings are owned by local merchants. And the pixelated lights, the ones that are multi-colored and create animation, would be focused on those, on the second floor, the size of the buildings. There's a way to take chicken wire and rebar and create other animations. We're not quite at that point. It's really more of a discussion as to where and what the town would like to do, where they'd like to go and what they'd like to do. But, yeah, it would be an increase to what's existing there now.
And so, the display would get bigger?
It would get bigger, yeah. And the music, then, so it ties into the music. So, when you would come into the plaza, there's programs out there, very inexpensive programs, that will allow you to drive in, tune your radio to a station that we're broadcasting there in the plaza. It would play music that would then be coordinated with the animation if we went that route. So, you could drive in, have music, even have pre-recorded messages from the councilmembers or just a holiday greeting of sorts. Drive in, the music would then coordinate, and you could drive through the plaza. And I think it takes about three to five minutes to get through the plaza at the peak of this season. And so, you'd have music and coordinating with the lights. And that would just be continued.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, here, Mr. Bellis, do we have a figure as to what our side of this cost was?
We purchased just around $5,000 in the actual lighting.
Okay. And labor and...
Steve, any idea?
Yeah. I mean, I think that was what the request was, to find out exactly what it took, what on.
Right. And if you go back, there's a...
I understand from your side, we had that, but...
Right.
For example, we don't know, you know, what it cost Kit Carson to bring their trucks to their manpower and all that stuff at the time that they did. And it's just a nice thing to know how much is, you know, given to the community by this project. And that's why we want to look at it.
Sure. And if you'll allow me, I've talked with Luis, and he was going, this was a while ago, going to the accountant to make that determination to give me a number. As I said, as of this writing, as of yesterday, I hadn't received that. If you would allow me, once I get those numbers and maybe working with Mr. Kenbeck, we can put together the final cost, the labor cost that are attributed to this project, so that you have a complete understanding, which would then validate the $12,000 number that I got in there or invalidate it to some degree, one way or the other. I understand that's an important value that we're missing at this point. And if you would, I can hand it to you, well, contingent upon Kit Carson, but I hope it can happen to you before the next meeting. And may not have to bring it up as a meeting issue at this point.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, so, we had, Councilmember Mayor, Mr. Mayor. We had probably off and on four or five of our parks guys or facilities guys helping. It was all during the day, no overtime. I mean, I don't know, about $15 an hour on average, given the three or four days.
So, how many volunteers did we have from the public?
There were no volunteers besides myself on the tree, on the bigger trees. You had cadre volunteers working with Judy Escobal on the lower stuff. Because of the timing, we weren't able to coordinate together. Plus, the requirements of the boom trucks would not allow non-certified people to operate in those. So, most of the volunteers were working with Judy at that point.
Thank you. Mr. Bellis?
Mr. Mayor, did I hear you correctly that Mayor Burrow contributed $1,000 and the town manager contributed $1,000 to this?
Yes, you heard correctly. And so, break up with our contributions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counselor?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mitch, for your timely and professional breakdown that you've been for us. And I hope, I've spoken with Judy, she has a breakdown as well, pretty much. So, I just wanted to thank you for that.
You're welcome. We understand that we'd like to move forward into next year, so the more professional we can be now, and hopefully, you can look forward to that level of professionalism to even make quick decisions. We have a lot of time to plan, but I think this is it.
We'll see you later.
Ms. Mitch? Thank you, everyone. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank everybody who was involved with this project. It shows what work has happened to making the community a happier place to celebrate holidays. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else? Not to go on to item B, 2015 sale? Matt? Do we look for spectacular flashings?
Yes, oh, yes. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, Mr. Bellis. I'm here to discuss, introduce you to more efforts by the Towne Place Festival sale. I want to introduce first, Dan Cassidy, who's vice president of the Towne Place Festival. Mr. Ferkah Ferroa could not be here today, the president. But we'll start with a brief overall introduction of what we have planned for the fall arts.
Yes, thank you. Fall Arts Festival, entering its 41st year. That was all run by volunteers. And last year, we generated $40,000 to $50,000 in income in our sales. And we have a grant program, we've been back to schools and community centers. Fall Arts Festival this, in 2015, is between September 25th and October 4th. And it is once again going to be spread around the town in the historic district with multiple venues for the art shows. And we thank the town for helping us, specifically us taking over the town for the week. And this year, we're trying to connect with area businesses to promote more promotions, a film festival, more performances, public art collections being opened by the South Coliseum Fire Department and the library, allowing us to show their collections. And last year was our collaboration with Paseo. We gave them $5,000 seed money, and I think it was money all spent, to Matt.
Thanks. And so, I'm here again, well, again, serving as the director of the Paseo for 2015. And I have with me two other of our team members, Agnes Chavez, who's your associate director, and David Mates, who's also on the team here with me today as well. We're excited to, again, come to the town and present our ideas for 2015. As you know, the Paseo is an outdoor art festival dedicated to bringing the art installation, performance, and projection for free to the town's community as well than beyond. We just want to thank you for your efforts and help. Last year, we could not have done this. The assistance of Public Works Facilities, the police, and the fire department were essential. We could not have done this before. And we're excited to return, this time for two days, September 25th and 26th. It'll be the opening days, opening day of the Towne Place Festival kickoff. But I just wanted to kind of give some feedback on the impact we believe we had on the community this past year and what we want to build on as we move forward. We felt like, being the youngest festival in town, we found a voice for the community to come out together and enjoy art, art that's free, art that's accessible, art that's participatory, that they can take part in and be a part of the festival. We estimate over 3,000 people came out for the opening of the Fall Arts Festival. There was gallery openings, there was over 20 different art installations that people could go through and see. We are excited about the feedback we heard. I never would have, I had no idea of the impact, the feedback that we see on the streets. On Facebook, in the newspaper, people were static. And I quote some people saying, "Fresh, amazing, fun." This got people into the streets, interested in art again. And one of the best, I think, is that Paseo has the potential to make Towne a destination for people looking for artwork that does more than hang on a wall. We think we are really bringing something to northern Mexico, to Towne, and offering that to the region and to the whole country to come out and enjoy that. A key component of what we do with the Paseo is engaging the youth, young adults, in workshops. That includes our STEM arts program, which is run by Agnes Chavez. She did an incredible job in contacting and finding artists that not only would contribute their work to the streets and to the public, but also meet with students while they were in town, engaging through a component of art with science, technology, engineering, and math. It brought so much to our community, so much to the youth, bringing them out and engagement with art and education, that we want to double those efforts. And this year, we're hoping to work with more schools, including the Towne High School, Middle School, Cuesta High, Vista Grande, Towne Academy, and then the others. And those efforts are already underway. Our future plan is to continue to keep, hit the word out. We do little pop-ups around town, give them that light we do. It's just funnest to engage the community, keep the presence of art in, obviously, accessible. We also just finished our international call for entries for 2015. We had over 50 entries from as close by as Towne and Cuesta, as far away as Berlin, New York. And it's very exciting. It's very exciting to see the people who are wanting to come here to show their work and to share with us. We also are working with collaborations that we had established last year and new ones, including New Mexico Arts, the Museum of Art based in Colorado, the Towne Center for the Arts, the Towne Place Festival, as well as new partners, possibilities with Towne Short's Film Festival, the Towne Ski Ballet, as well as the Towne Solar Music Festival. And we're excited to keep working with our advisors out of Santa Fe and Albuquerque. And we're talking about art organizations that have been doing this much longer than we have. One called Currents, and the other is 516 Arts. And we're collaborating with them and working with them on marketing and sharing promotional efforts to even get our word out even more. And they've been extremely helpful and really celebrating art for northern Mexico, the whole state. So, again, I come here and asking you, we would love to, again, have full sponsorship by the Towne House for the Paseo 2015. We're budgeting $80,000 this year. It's more than twice what we did last year. We learned a lot. We want to make it bigger, better organized. We want to offer more to the community and the visitors. At this point, we need to secure our artists. We're working a lot, we're giving ourselves a lot more time. We're coming to you a little bit more early than we did last year because we want to take these artists that we have and start promoting them and start having people make plans to come to Towne. We chose to do a whole weekend so that we can have people stay over for multiple days to enjoy multiple events, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, to confirm all this, to start moving forward, we're requesting the town of $25,000. This commitment will allow us to aggressively fundraise to meet our other goals for additional funds. We are applying for grants. We're soliciting our donors from last year. And next week, in fact, several of us are traveling to Colorado to meet with the Museum of Art and ask them, again, for their donation, even more. And we believe that we're bringing people to Towne. This influx of people will generate tax revenue that will surpass what you're able to put into this project. This $25,000 will get the Paseo 2015 going. This will get us moving for the year. We can confirm our artists. We can start publicity and marketing events for the fall. I humbly ask the council if we can secure this $25,000 to, again, bring life, community inspiration, and educational opportunities to the Towne House. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And thank you for, you know, this last year's, the Paseo was great. It was multi-generational, multicultural, and, I mean, it was interactive. And it was great. It was just great. It was a great opportunity for our community. I do have a question for you. I know that, I'm, Counselor Hall, I'm going to kind of look at you for a second because in, I think this last weekend, there was a tour of the old Towne courthouse. And there was a group that was wanting to come and do or bring an exhibit or something as far as the exception is involved. Is that...
Right. I wish Paul were here, but from memory, Mr. Mayor, New Mexico Architectural Society also involved in safety organization would like to have their statewide fall convention in the fall. I'm not sure of that date. I didn't bring those notes. But Paul knows. Paul figured out. Can that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what... And look, we can talk about that. We understand that we might be able to incorporate this part of the job.
So, any contact and then it's Paul, when you know Paul.
Yeah. Counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that the Towne House should be supported in this for the long run, for many years to come. I think it did a lot for the community. And I'm really grateful that there were so many people who were involved in this map and down. I already look forward to this coming year. I'm just curious, on the dates that you're going to be having between September 25th and October 4th, there's two farmers' markets in the plaza. And how does that just work in somehow?
Well, the Paseo specifically would be the first weekend, which would be Friday and Saturday. That's a very good point about the plaza. Last year, we did not actually have installations where the farmer's market would be. So, we would definitely take that in consideration and work with the farmer's market and perhaps even enhance the experience of the farmer's market with a different installation. So, we'd be aware of that, that people...
Okay, now, just a reminder.
Yeah.
Counselor Hall?
I guess in that regard, would the Paseo be an all-day project during that Saturday?
That is our goal. Last year, the comment was, people were still working. They weren't able to get out to the Paseo in time. And out of town, people couldn't really make it. They would also be at work and drive up to Towne. So, by moving the majority of the events to all-day Saturday into Saturday evening, it would allow more time for people to come up and experience it, to stay over Friday and Saturday night, and for us to do as many daytime events as nighttime events.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate what you did too because I think that the Fall Arts Festival was starting to get a little old. And, you know, we did it, we've been... And we did it, we've been there, we've done that, we've seen it. And now by re-inventing it, in a sense, you've actually created now a product that will look into the future of being something that can grow and prosper because it has a new life to it. And that's important, because we all look at things and say, if we do them too often, too long, they lose interest. And by rebirth of what you did here, I think is a good thing for the community and a good thing for the art world. And so I thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Rick, these are going to go on a list and then come back to us for possible funding?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, actually, I was going to address that at the end of this, but I had just sent an email to you with an outline for, we had originally put $100,000 aside for, you know, the incentives, which included tourism, excuse me, events. And that was the source of money we used for the condos. There's approximately $82,000 left in net, and given the short time between now and the end of fiscal year, get proposals out, get responses, my suggestion in that email is that we look at working with existing events that occur in the spring, such as Mother's Day, Solar Fest that are already approaching us, the Lialac Festival, but also to look at, excuse me, some of the events farther down the road, such as the Paseo, that our cash draft had a major impact on tourism and could be major signature events in the future. And as was said by Counselor Paul, to enhance our other events. And if there's a way, either through marketing or other ways, by releasing this money in a competitive proposal for these groups to respond very quickly, short timeframe, next couple of weeks, that we can help them out, they can start planning now. And I think that, as councils reflected earlier, at our earlier meeting, the sooner we can firm up these events and know that they're going to be anchors for this year in particular, the quicker we can build that into our marketing plans.
Okay. And probably after the other two presentations I asked, Floyd, because, you know, when we're doing all these type of events and funding and stuff like that, we want to make sure that the anti-admission portion of the news is covered. But we'll turn to you after the other two, because make sure your presentation, so thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just got one last thing. And that is just reflecting our timeline and urgency, and I appreciate you considering this and looking at this now. And we do want to try to firm up things by April, early April, and so I look forward and working with the town.
Thank you. And that would give us an opportunity to actually put it on our website and make sure people know what's happening in the community. So thank you. So next item would be the Mother's Day celebration. Former Mayor Cora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, manager, staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you. If I may, I'd like to give you some pictures that I could shoot you.
Don't steal, stop your...
If I can give you an actual picture, that's all I have. Thank you. What you have before you, of course, my name is Derek Cora of DMC Broadcasting. And what you have in front of you are these pictures of the last Mother's Day event that took place at Kit Carson Park. And the town manager was gracious enough to ask me to come to present to you as a kind of a preliminary presentation in our request to ask for the park again. We look forward to another Mother's Day. This has been going on since 2001. As you see from the pictures, and I think in the second picture, you have, there's truly the town manager there in the audience. He was in attendance and saw firsthand, I think, the magnitude of people that come to this event. I want to take note to let you all know that not only are the locals or people from New Mexico, but primarily a lot of that audience comes from Colorado, or neighbors from Utah. Many individuals have roots here in northern New Mexico, and many people now are starting to, it's been a family tradition now that they plan their gatherings and their family reunions around this event. It's one of the only cultural events that take place in this nature, and the best thing about it is it's free of charge. People have asked me why I keep doing it, you know, where we don't charge the audience. And in your typical realm, I've done promotions before for my band, and usually try to get 20%, 20% to 30% of your revenue comes from sponsorship, the rest comes from door proceeds. But we don't have door proceeds. We make it free, and something that my staff wanted to do, and it's been very, very successful. When I was in the restaurant business, and I saw firsthand what it does for restaurant tours as well. Our challenge that we have with people visiting is, people are always calling me, my phone rings off the hook, seeing if I, especially during the time that I was mayor, if I knew of any rooms available. Because during that time, the rooms are sold out, and I think that's what the, what the goal is, is to bring people from out of town and sit in our hotels and visualize our businesses. So clearly, that's, I think it's been evident that that's what this event has done. It is challenging for us to continue doing it, but we're so entrenched in it that Taos is its home. We did Father's Day event, the first angle in Espanola, went out very, very well. So that's just another event that has sprung out from this event here. So we look forward to, you know, we're going to make a formal request to the town manager for the use of the park. We've been in discussions preliminarily with the mayor and the manager. We both indicated their support of the event. I apologize that I could not make the meeting last week that we had scheduled, but I believe we have one this week, and I'll check my calendar. But we look forward to working with the town, continue this tradition that we've, you know, started, and it's called the Annual Mother's Day Celebration, that's what it's known as. This morning, my staff was telling me that, you know, where is it going to be? And I said, "It's going to be at Kit Carson Park." I said, "Well, at least I think it is." I said, "I have a meeting this afternoon," because we were already getting calls this morning as well. And I stand for any questions. So on the pictures there, you see the crowd shots, different angles. There was a point there where you couldn't even see the grass of Kit Carson Field, they were just covered with people. And the last page, you see the staging, you know, we take this very seriously, we contract, you know, very, very, you know, contract-grade equipment. And, you know, one thing that we do take pride in is that we virtually have had no major incidents. We make sure that our security is licensed, we make sure that we have an abundance of security to make sure that the incident is, I mean, the event is incident-free, and that people that are wishing to have drinks can go into the proper designated area, and those that are wanting to take their families and have a good time can have a good time as well, and safe. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I look for your favorable support to this and ask for your support.
And again, if you showed up last week, I would have been upset, you know. Congratulations on your new grandbaby, they're having, that's the reason we didn't show up, congratulations for...
Yeah, they called and, I'm a grandparent now, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Counselor? Counselor?
Mayor, is this a two-day event now, or is it one day?
It's a two-day event, and this year makes it very special because not every day does Mother's Day fall on the traditional Mexican holiday, which is Dia de los Madres, which is May 10th, no matter what day. And this day, it falls on Sunday. This year, it falls on Sunday, so we expect a lot more because of that.
Where do your vendors come from that you have?
They come from all over the state. We have several that are local. You have, you know, you have these vendors that go from event to event throughout the state, and we have a few of those. But we do have some traditional homegrown vendors that participate. We open it up, so it's not like we're, we, of course, we want local vendors first and foremost, but we, we have a system that has worked where we don't have an abundance of vendors, because we want to make sure that the vendors that do pay the space, which offsets some of our hard costs, have an opportunity to make a profit as well. Because the first year when we tried it, of course, the first year, we tried to do it all on our own, and that just didn't work, there were just not enough of us to do it. But when we contracted, like, we'll make sure that there's only so much, vendors that are only selling burgers, maybe there's only going to be two of those, vendors that are selling turkey, like, maybe there's going to be one or two of those, so that they get their fair share of the crap, and there's not enough vendors.
So you answered, I'll just ask for your question. The, what is your schedule and timelines for this event, on Saturday?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Peralta, traditionally, what we do is we start at noon and we go to dusk. And we usually don't like to have the performers have, performing with, and it also saves us from having the concert lights, you know, shining on the performers. So we have to go to dusk, which is about eight. The last performer will go probably on about six-thirty to seven. And by dusk, by the time it gets dark, there's no more performances going on. That's about the time. The use of the park, however, would need to be probably from Friday morning through Monday morning, only because the staging arrives, we have to truck in the staging and bring it in on Friday. The sound, the sound crew usually starts setting up Friday afternoon and they tear down this stage. I think the only, the only thing we would need Monday morning would be just access to the stage to haul it out, because the trucker has to come in. They don't do it on Saturdays or Sundays. But each day would be 12:00 to approximately 8:30, the entertainment is actually going
Counselor, country?
I, you have a proven track record, you know, I went to that for years for myself, and I, I'm glad that you still have it going, because it's one of the cultural events that we need around here. And I was just wondering about, I think last year, I wasn't possessed expecting my grandbaby as well, but was there an arts and crafts show going on at the same time that Mother's Day, that was going on?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yes, there was an arts and craft fair, and I think the concern that was, was each one going to clash with each other? And I think what we found is that they actually complemented each other. You know, people that were going to the craft fair actually, you know, attended the concert. Those that were attending the concert, black his for their mothers and grandmothers, you know. So I think that they complemented each other, at least, you know, from what I heard, it worked well together.
Is there going to be another craft fair that will happen this year at the same day?
We haven't formally received a request, but it's my understanding, I think it was Chamber of Commerce, you know, just here, that's kind of the kind of tradition for them too.
And the parking, how, how is the situation of the parking, all of those going on?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, we attended several DRC meetings, that we came up with a parking plan for the performers, for the vendors, also for ADA. And it worked out very, very well. You know, I'd like to express my appreciation to the mayor, the manager, and the staff, the fire department, the planning department, your buildings and grounds department, and the fire, the police department for coming together, collaborating, and really addressing all the needs, both from, from us, the event promoter, to the people that were attending on it. Because there was a lot of people who didn't know where our plaza, there was confusion, well, I thought it was down here, and people were, you know, in specific places withheld the information that we needed. The ADA, I believe we used the TCA parking lot, or the parking lot right in front exclusively for ADA. And people that with handicap issues really were appreciative of that.
I think, I think it's great, I think you should continue doing that, and go on to the crash or somehow work together, you know, if it happens as soon as we can again, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to plan ahead of time, so.
Thank you.
So Mayor, you know, we're clearly quite a few years on this on the other side of the town, it's a great event, and hopefully we can continue forward, and there is a process that we're looking at using. And at the end of the whole presentation, I did ask Mr. Lopez to kind of speak a little bit about the anti-admission, because that seems to be an issue, and maybe we eventually do, and make sure that we get our thoughts covered, so.
Mr. Mayor, I fully understand that, and it's great to be on this side, because now I can advocate for my, for my own event, and, you know, I just want to ask for your support. I think that when you look at the, there's no real way to quantify how many people come, but when you go out there, it's just so evident, you know, the abundance of people and the fact that, you know, you can't find rooms on that weekend when people come and they want additional room, because they, more family came than expected, you know, I think it's pretty evident. You know, you, during the years, I think during Mayor Peralta's, this thing had been going on since 2001, and the town has been supportive every year since then. When I was mayor, of course, I had to abstain myself from that, but I know that there was a process where initially it was started through larger stacks, larger stacks brand, and then it was changed through general fund. And I think, I'm not sure how the process is, I certainly can appreciate the new system that you all are starting now for these type of events, since I think a lot of them have been proven to be successful. So just want to make note that DMC, the times that we've received funding, we have to provide receipts so that we can show exactly what that use was for, and those forms of receipts are for advertising, staging, and infrastructure needed to put on the event that thus brings the tourists that I think for all the people.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I hope we can continue to keep this refraining, because one of the warmest things I saw was kids that weren't old enough to have a job, certainly not old enough to drive, and saying, "Going mob and staying, see this is your president, I'd write you here for this concert." They were so proud of that, it was just touching.
Yes, that, Mr. Mayor, manager, I, Mr. Bellis, I fully agree, because it's been tempting, you know, we should charge a mental charge, we should charge, you know, three, four, five dollars, it's a cost. But that, then that changes the whole dynamics of everything, of how it started. Then bands and promoters of those bands are going to want to cut up the gate, because now we're charging for that. And now, we've been fortunate for a lot of these New Mexico bands that believe in this, believe in northern New Mexico, that they're willing to do it. And DMC, what we do is we offer them advertising contracts when they promote their CDs, you know, in exchange for the disforums. So it's a big commitment, both from DMC Broadcasting, the bands, and the Town of Taos, that's been going on for years.
Thank you.
We couldn't do it without.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So next, we have the Solar Fest, Dawn.
Hi, Mayor Coroni, and council members, and Mr. Bellis. My name is Dawn, I'm getting ready to do another Solar Fest History 101, like I kind of do. But Dawn Richardson, Dan Sherman and I promote, produce, and manage the Taos Solar Music Festival, which began in 1999 in Kit Carson Park. We also negotiated and staged the Mumford &amp; Sons Concert Park in 2013 as well. But I will say this, Dan and I both had up to the point in 1999 deep roots in festival promotion and production, artist acquisition, and community relationships with respect to tourism festivals. I have been a shareholder and partner with the Tiger Red Bluegrass Festival, which is parent company, which is Planet Bluegrass for over 25 years. When Dan and I started the Solar Fest in 1999, it was our dream to create a world-class musical event that would bring music lovers from all over the country to Taos to appreciate its geographic beauty, renowned art quality, and unusual adobe architecture, and introducing them to all the excitement that this land has to offer. We set out to build a festival that would appeal to all ages, focusing on a family-friendly atmosphere that would bring new generations to Taos and the region. We saw the ongoing marketing outreach to Texas and the affluent art community that acknowledged value to also reach out to the very desirable hip baby lovers, Gen Xers and Gen Yers. Through the years, the Solar Fest has hosted all kinds of musical artists, including Harry Belafonte, Los Lily Boys when they very first came out, Los Lobos, Raul Mallo, Jorma Kalkinen from Jefferson Starship, or Jefferson Airplane, actually, The Indigo Girls, Michael Franti, Lyle Lovett, and many, many more. And so by 2007, Solar Fest was selling tickets in over 45 states, Canada and even Europe. And we could track this because of the fact that, you know, we, you know, we were the ones selling the tickets. It was hosting over 15,000 People Days over a three-day event. We filled every single hotel room and rental in Taos with ticket buyers spilling into rooms in Espanola and Santa Fe. Then the recession hit. When Lyle Lovett and Michael Franti took the stage in 2012, we had built back up to 10,000 People Days over a two-day festival, but we were still recovering from... but we were still recovering from the recession. Twenty thirteen saw Mumford and Sons bring eight thousand people to the park on a Thursday night, which had brought a proven two-hundred-thousand-dollar GRT bump to the town of Taos, plus another two-hundred thousand to the county during a show held, like I say, in the middle of the week. This was a Thursday night. And not to mention all of the international and national press that garnered. Twenty thirteen was also a year of personal challenges, breast cancer and a difficult job situation, which I like to say that that job that I do have over at the hospital supports my festival habit. So last year I chose to step away from producing a large festival. It was a hard but important decision. But we're back and we're strong and we're focused as ever. Our goal remains the same, to continue building an annual world-class music festival, bringing thousands of people to Taos, targeting our core audience and attracting newcomers. Currently, we are working on Solar Fest twenty fifteen to be held on the last weekend of June at Kit Carson Park. Some of you may know, but I'm sure especially Councilwoman Peralta, that booking performers generally requires a minimum of fifty percent discount, deposit. And given that national ticket selling acts can cost upwards of hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's a huge outlay that the promoters, Dan and I, have to put out. However, we do feel that this is a necessary part of doing business in order to persuade these people out of their houses, into their cars, or into a plane to come hundreds and hundreds of miles to this destination that we call our home. So, uh, not just those computer clicks here, our success is measured by actual people in town. So remember that we are competing with municipalities who get that events, bring people out to spend money. So artist fees coupled with production costs, advertising, marketing, site labor, all those things that the former mayor was talking about, can bump a Solar Fest budget up towards around a half million dollars. So yes, over the years, Solar Fest has developed into a multimillion dollar business. However, with very little or mainly no profit yet to take out of myself. So obviously, we are passionate about Taos and the Solar Fest. We want and need to collaborate with the town and seek financial infusion, infusion into the Taos Solar Music Festival to continue to produce this major event as the premier music festival in the state and the region and the nation. We don't want to necessarily copy other states, even though, like I say, a lot of my background is in Colorado. This is a very unique place. It's a very unique event. We get that. And that's what we want to, that's what we want to help promote. Our goal is to create a self-supported festival and also work with, you know, helping anybody else develop events as they come along as well. So I believe that this current government body understands what it takes to move into the future with vision, enthusiasm, and the courage to act. We're excited. We're, we're very excited to be back. It's scary, but we are excited. And the thing that I will say too is that Solar Fest has been one of those training grounds to help build an amazing support staff that we have between the police department, the fire department, uh, the, the town workers, public works, uh, the council, all that kind of stuff. It's been a very exciting journey since, in these last like fifteen, sixteen years of putting this festival together. So we appreciate consideration of funding and making Kit Carson Park and TCA available at the last week of June this year. Any questions?
Council? Thank you, Dawn, for continuing to, to forward, Councilor Coro.
Uh, Dawn, how many days are you looking at? Three-day weekends or four-day weekend?
Not a four. Even though we have in the past, like started off with the Thursday night events, uh, you know, like we've provided entertainers such as Peter Rowan and stuff like that to play on Thursday night for free on the plaza, and we'll probably work with the chamber to try to do something like that this year. Right now, we have a strong two-day event and we're trying to do a pre-event on the Friday night. So a strong two-day event, Saturday, Sunday.
Have you started your, your hit list as far as who you'd like to have?
Absolutely.
And I'm not asking for anything, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Because you already, because you already started to.
I, oh, yeah. I mean, like basically, the good news is, is like we, uh, yes, we are sort of in a rebuilding year this year. But we have a huge audience that's been out there waiting for us to come back and they want to come back. And how I book a lot of my artists is, is like, you know, I keep an eye on what's going on in the region. And like one particular artist that I have right now, I, I, I happen to know that we can compete really heavily with their only other play in that state. And I, and I'm pretty confident that I can bring a couple of thousand people just with that person. And so that said, then it's all about, and, and he's a big enough anchor to where I can start attracting all these other people. And I, I want, I want to go very eclectic. You know, I always, I, I like pop, right, you know? We actually don't have much reggae, which is an irony, considering that we've always been viewed as such a hippie festival, but, uh, but we like rock and we like Hispanic and we like all kinds of different music and we like to appeal to all kinds of different people. But the other side of it is, is that when we fill all these hotel rooms, and I'm in talks with some of these hotel rooms, because they have been known to charge triple what they normally charge. Solar Fest weekend, we, they charge more than they charge during the Christmas holidays for, and, and that's a little, that can get a little bit daunting to some of our guests. So we will be looking actually for some camping spots as well.
Do you look at your big day being Friday or on Saturday?
No.
Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday. We usually like to go a little bit later on Saturday as well because of the fact, uh, one of the things is, is like if you, we, we do book bigger for Saturday and then we try to go a little bit later so then the people have to stay. You know, they can't necessarily drive back to Albuquerque. And especially in the last few years since the recession, because we have totally developed our drive audience that have been coming from the front range up in Colorado, from Albuquerque, from Santa Fe, uh, which has been nice. And now, which is interesting, where I really want, part of the thing is that I do need some marketing support. I, I, I want to reach deep into Texas because of just the gas prices that are going on right now. And, uh, and I think that, and Texas has been making a huge show up on my, you know, Facebooks and emails and all that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Mayor, we're talking, one of the concerns that keep up Mumford and Sons at the concerts is that, you know, it kind of hurts to watch thirty dozen dollars go to the city of Albuquerque or city of New Mexico for ticket sales. Is there anything we can do about that to have a local option?
Uh, that can certainly be on the table. Yeah, I mean, like we could certainly, uh, yeah, there's all kinds of actually ideas that we have about selling tickets. We can sell tickets, because you're right. That was like when we were selling tickets with Ticketmaster and that was, that was, um, we had to listen a lot to Mumford and Sons on how we did that show, just because of all of their national and international alliances. And Ticketmaster was one of the sort of like the big heavies that came along with that. Now that said, ticket sales for Solar Fest are not going to be dictated by Ticketmaster or anybody else. We can certainly do those, uh, more on a local basis.
Yeah, if I could, I just want to thank Dawn. I think there's some things that people don't know. Here, you and I were at county and we wanted to open the courthouse with kind of a flourish and there were no lights and there was no curtains or stages or anything. And Dawn agreed to put Mexico and us and June Lauderdale up there. Uh, and I know she lost, personally lost a thousand, two thousand, three thousand dollars on that.
Not three.
Okay. And left the blackout curtain so that the plays could continue there and left other things that were important to that continuing. And when she did have cancer and told me my heart fell to the floor when we, we weren't going to have a Solar Fest last summer. Um, she worked for months, if people don't know about it, on Saturdays here with other local promoters and venues to try to help them bring an act. In the end, when we couldn't do that, uh, she stepped forward to help us with the Congos and through other groups. And despite what people hear out there, her and Danny's, and I can tell you they were there twenty-four hours a day and spent six weeks just trying to get the Congos to come, uh, they made nine hundred fifty dollars. And so, I mean, she, her heart is really in wanting to see this community be a music center. And I appreciate your effort to work with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilor Cunt?
One of the dates, for your last weekend?
It's last weekend is June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Twenty-sixth, if we can, you know, we are going to do something on Friday. Something.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to the legal questions, one of the reasons I asked the, the particular Mother's Day and Solar Fest agenda is because council had reflected that if we were going to have a, a large events that required, uh, the park, uh, traffic, special parking conditions, that they wanted to approve those in advance. I would ask that regardless of any of the other items we might consider another time, that if you could give permission to both of those events for the dates that they've identified that they'd like to use Kit Carson Park.
And, and I, you know, because of the way it's on the agenda, I don't know if we can do that today because of just our presentations, Mr. Bellis, so we can bring it forward on the next meeting and have it on the agenda for at least time of those days.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilor Coro?
Mr. Mayor, you, the only thing, question I ask is that if there's no conflict with those dates.
There, there aren't at this time.
Right.
So, Mr. Lopez, if you would like to just, and then just some highlights, we don't want, you know, the, you know, just want to make sure that as these events move forward and, and that's some of the reasons we're trying to put some safeguards in place.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, some of us have had discussions concerning these issues previously, but the two primary issues were, one is the anti-donation clause, which is a clause of the Mexico constitution prohibiting donor entities from donating to private entities, um, goods, services, and, um, the, uh, which includes space. And then the other issue is the procurement issue, which requires governmental entities to procure, um, when it seeks to pay for goods or services provided to whatever, in this case, be the cost. Um, so for instance, in the case of the Mother's Day concert, the way the county gets around the anti-donation clause is it doesn't just give a check to, um, DMC Enterprises or, or, um, or Mayor Coro, but what it does is it reimburses that entity for advertising that's done on behalf of the town of Taos. And so DNC, as I understand it, my conversation with the county attorney is, is that they turn in invoices for advertising that is sold on behalf of the county and the county reimburses them for those expenses. And so there's two ways that we could approach it. Either the town is actually in control of the event itself and then procures an entity to, um, perform the services on its behalf or manage the event, so to speak. Or in the other instance, it would be that we can, whatever entity that actually conducts the event, um, performs, um, some service such as advertising to the town of Taos and then is reimbursed for whatever invoices it presents or spending on.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. I'm just, you know, want to make sure, you know, those are all addressed as we move forward. Uh, if that's the wish you'd make, Councilor. Thank you. So we'll go on to item nine and it's, uh, Councilor Mham?
Just, so, just a point of clarification then. Uh, as we have started off on our QRP process with, uh, our community block grants, uh, what is, uh, what is the approach that we're going to be taking with the events being proposed to us from now until the end of the fiscal year and then July first and the subsequent?
Are you talking about the community block grants? Is that what you're talking about, these events?
These events. I'm using the community block grants as an example.
I, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, uh, I have some number. I don't know that that actually was determined. I think the proposal from the town, from the town manager was, is that we do a similar, um, approach to the events as was done to the block festival on Mother's Day.
Um, that, that's correct. You have that mail, uh, on the computers and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll consult between attorney and, uh, regards to how to set that up. But that would be my suggestion and I think going forward, particularly into next year. The, the block grant allows for those groups that are here, uh, to bring their events forward, but it also allows for innovation, that there may be groups like last year, we used Curtis Ford, as I say, we can go forward. And I believe it would solve for a care initiative.
Right, so, so I'm presuming then, Mr. Manager, that we will go through our PRQ process. It'll be vetted by procurement team and will have recommendations as to their advisement regarding all of these events, uh, just the same as we did with our community block grants. Do I got that about right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mham. Great questions. Anything else from council? Not, we'll go ahead and move on to item nine, citizens' forms, citizens' wishes to speak or have the opportunity to do so. In five minutes, no action will be taken. I mean, just your name for the record.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Manager. My name is Lynn Fitzgerald. Uh, today I'm representing Jacqueline Romitas and Melanie, excuse me, Melanie Baca. They're, uh, from the Coyote T-shirt store on the plaza. And upon further research that they have done, um, that's been gathered, rather, this group would like to make a presentation to the Farmers Market Committee, which I understand has been formed. And, uh, they'd like to meet with them when they next meet. And I'm here to submit this, to submit this request. And I understand there'll be no more public hearings perhaps on the Farmers Market that there has been a committee that has been formed who's going to address the issues that Councilwoman Ken Two had brought up at the last Farmers Market meeting. There are probably about six issues. And I understand the committee has been formed. Is that correct?
Mr. Bellis?
I wouldn't say there's been a committee formed. I know that the police chief and the fire chief have a couple of areas that they take in with marketing, buses, things that are under their public safety concerns.
All right.
And then, um, I, I think there is a series of meetings with Farmers Market representatives to try to provide coordination, but I think it certainly arrange a meeting between your client and yourself and the Farmers Market folks.
All right, I probably won't be involved. They were able to attend today, so I stepped forward to ask for this.
Yeah, I mean, we're, just, just because the public hearings are open doesn't mean we're not open too. But there's, there's a lot of folks out there that have come up with good ideas on how to work things.
All right. So do you recommend that they contact the police chief and fire chief or do they contact you?
Um, they, they could go through our office, yeah, and I can give you my card.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the citizens' form?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members and audience members. This is just a short snippet from CAB, Community Against Violence, to let you all know that.
And just your name, Melinda.
Of course, Melinda Williams, and the executive director of Community Against Violence. Um, your chief of police, David Bieber, was invited by a representative of the governor, Governor Martinez to talk at a press conference tomorrow and he, he couldn't. to talk at a press conference tomorrow, and he couldn't make it. And he suggested that we ask Sheriff Jerry Hope, and he will be going to it. The Campaign is a Start by Believing. It's a national movement that is designed to help survivors of sexual violence begin with having their community and family members believe that something happened to them, instead of starting by not believing, which is where we tend to begin. And the governor is holding a press conference tomorrow in Albuquerque, and some, myself and some representatives of CAV are going. And I just wanted you to know that your police chief is very highly thought of across the state, and we very much like working with the police department. They have had great change of how they work with survivors and how they work with our agency, and we'd like to commend them for their work, and I want you to know that he had been invited.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else, citizens? Not, then we'll go on to--
Mr. Mayor, in relation to that, what Ms. Williams just said, I think across my desk came an agreement between the police chief and Community Against Violence for the training by the police chief of persons involved in domestic violence. It's one of the great aspects of the council's mayor's passion.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Counselor Muhammad? And just wanna, I do wanna recognize our Commissioner Jim Phambo, who's in the back. Thank you for being here, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else of his side? Thank you, Melinda, and thank you, Chief. So, again, it's great to see when the two law officials are really working together. It's great to see that the Town and House Police Department and the County Sheriff Department are actually working together, collaborating more, and it's great to see that.
I'm here, huh?
It's pretty neat to see.
Yeah.
That's really fascinating.
Thank you. So, we'll go on to the public hearing. It's a CDVG planning grant hearing, and Melinda, Linda Perry's our grant person, and this is a public hearing, so, Melinda, open this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors, Major Bellis. This is our second public hearing for the CDVG planning grant. The Community Development Block Grant Program was established under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 in order to assist communities in providing essential community facilities, providing decent housing for residents, promoting economic development and maintaining a sustainable living environment. State and national objectives of the CDVG program require that the assistance be made available to, for activities staff that are at risk, at least one of the following. One, an activity identified as principally benefiting persons of low and moderate income. Two, aid in prevention and elimination from sun, if light. Three, the other community development needs of recent origin have a particular urgency because existing conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to the health and welfare of the community, where other financial resources are not available to meet such needs. Planning applications are limited to a maximum of $50,000. Because Taus residents are 53% low to moderate income, we may apply for a grant that benefits the whole community, as opposed to selecting a special neighborhood that meets the low and moderate income needs. Projects must be on the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. Eligible projects include comprehensive plans, usability studies, base mapping, asset management plans, improvement and infrastructure capital improvement plans, climate change mitigation and adaptation plan, development of codes and ordinance, preliminary engineering reports, data gathering analysis and special studies, and regionalization of infrastructure and service delivery. It is the staff recommendation to apply for a park master plan. A park master plan will address current and future needs in the areas of capital improvements, recreation, open space, operations and services, and the plan should also include a base approach to implementation. So, with that being said, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor, for public input.
Is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment on this? Sir, yes, sir.
Phil, I'll give you a comment. This last snowstorm that we had, as a, the last meeting I mentioned this to, it really made the road where I live, my residence, pretty much impassable. I watched a school bus slide around on the road. That wasn't very pleasant to see. Fortunately, there were no kids on it yet. It's a SDS place, and it goes up to Defoea, and then Defoea goes back over to the south, south side of Wymer. The road is in use quite a bit, and the study needs to be done to get this road paved and make it safe for the community and the neighborhood there. Like I said, I saw school buses getting really squirrely after that last snowstorm. They got, you know, turned mud. And yesterday it was graded, but it didn't do anything to the road at all. Just kinda pushed the mud off to the side. Still have the major potholes, and like I said, it's getting pretty squirrely. It's getting bad. There's something needs to be done, and I'd like to see this road paved within the next two years. I mean, but of course, the study needs to be done first. And like I said a few months ago, I saw sheriffs try, sheriffs even slide off one of the corners there, too, and hit a pole. So, it's not, you know, it's not just me that lives there, there's several other people in that neighborhood that would like to see that road paved, though. I just want to--
And, Mayor, in fact, in response, up in the summer, we'll begin our Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan process, and if we can get that part of SES onto the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan, then that's certainly something that makes it eligible for all kinds of funding. But also, I don't know if Francis here or not, but we, SES has had some visibility studies done, and there is, I'm not totally sure--
Just talking about the west side, the west side of SES that's been done and already been getting improved, but, you know, it's the only street in the whole neighborhood that isn't, the only two streets in the whole neighborhood, all the way to Topol, isn't paved, and I still don't understand that. And it would be, like I said, when I saw the school bus last weekend, it was squirrely. I mean, that's why I said it's time to speak up and get about this. So, I'm not just thinking of myself and my neighborhood, I'm thinking about the children that ride that school bus and the other traffic that goes through there. It needs to be really paved. If you drive down, one day, Council, Mayor, drive down that road, and understand what I'm talking about.
And again, the first thing, the first process is to get that on the ICIP plan before anything can be done, because--
Yes, sir.
--applies for any type of funding to even move a project forward, it has to be on that kind, so that's the first process that I call--
Yes, sir, I'm just making you aware, now, you know, I've seen a school bus get squirrely. It's a big concern of mine to make sure that road gets paved within the next couple of years. I know it takes time, I know it don't happen overnight, but in the future, it would be nice to see that happen, and the neighborhood would be complete after that.
And are we sure that's a town road, not a con road?
It's a town road. I seen, I think I quoted that up at the last council meeting, and I do see the towns snowplow going up and down that road, so I'm pretty sure it's a town road. And it's right there on the border, so, I mean, that's something you're gonna have to figure out.
I will, I will ask, Francis is gonna be here this afternoon, he's gonna do a little presentation about some of our roads under the mayor's report, and so we'll, I'll try to get him to answer that question, too. SDS place?
Place, yes. It's the road that goes forward, turns a dirt, and SDS Road turns a left.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Bellis, I'm just curious, does this have any effect on our agreed-upon joint venture to do that coming to Medio?
Don't think of it as regular CDVG money. This is a pot of money that can only be used for planning grants.
And I didn't, I didn't think so, but one of my fellow commissioners just informed me that, quote unquote, town is turning their back on us, on Medio.
No, no, Commissioner, this is totally different than that. This is--
I didn't think that's what it was.
In fact, I think the county will probably be putting in the next year for a comprehensive planning grant, which is required every five years--
I just wanted to watch that, remember, before it blossomed into anything.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Yeah, we're moving forward on that.
Steve's down there right now talking to--
And thanks for taking the time to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Do you have something, Counselor Robles? No. So, any, anybody else from the public? So, well, then, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken on this item. Just had to be a public hearing at this point, and we'll move forward. Okay? So, we'll go out from matters from staff, selection of project for 2015 CDVG planning grant. Melinda?
So, as I stated earlier, the staff recommendation is to submit for planning grant for our park's master plan.
Okay. Is there action that needs to be taken?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so, council?
Move that the application-- Move the application to be submitted for funding grant to, for master plan for our parks.
You have a motion in second, any further discussion? Not called for the--
Counselor Valba?
Yes.
Counselor Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want me to say it from the beginning?
Yes. Resolution 1507, authorizing the submission of a CDVG grant application. Melinda?
Yes, Mayor, Council, Major Bellis, this was approved in December by council to submit an infrastructure CDVG application for the Family Youth Center. We have given a resolution as part of our application, and so that's what's before you today. The resolution of late, we submitting an application for $500,000 with a match of $50,000.
True. We have the motion in a second. Further discussion? Called for the--
Counselor Valba?
Yes.
Counselor Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who typed this up, but there is a type of one there at the end of administration. There's an extra M on there, so, I lost. Fix that.
Okay. So, resolution 1506, mid-year budget adjustments, Melinda?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, town manager. I'm gonna pass out, what do I call the, old-school red line version?
Where's the chief?
Chief.
Oh, he's, he took his standard.
And then just a, a little bit more narrative on some of the general departments. One for the clerk.
Chief, you missed out. She passed it over.
You know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to multitask.
I was wondering, I was asking for the chief, I think. Okay. So, you, in front of you, you have the two adjusted, one adjusted document, which is the resolution itself. Attached to your agenda packet is a mid-year bar summary in a Word form, just giving a brief summary of all of the items that are on that nine-page resolution. And then I just have that just department summary of some of the major departments that are requesting for more money, are moving big amounts of money within their departments themselves. So, we'll just go through the mid-year bar summary on general, the two-page document, this one here. I just have a video bar summary, and really what we're doing right now at this time, Mayor, council members, we are looking at our first six months of our activity through all our budgets, all our funds. And we're looking at any changes that we may need, that we're not either applying for or applying for, but additional monies may be needed, taking into account other priorities that may have happened throughout the first six months. So, reporting in December, our grocery receipts tax, we had already given that information, but based on our grocery receipts now, right now, we have increased 1% in the first six months of the fiscal year over our projections based on our 2014-15 year-to-date numbers. I just crossed that out. We're holding to that increase. Also, there are some revenue decreases in our other areas that are smaller base, such as our library, court finds, auto distribution, but at this time, we're not gonna make actually any paper or anything on the books of these adjustments until the end of the year, and we'll do that at that time. In the expenditure side of this mid-year budget adjustment, we've gone through the process of calculating the next 13.2 pay periods from DESEP from January 1st, looking at expenditures, any encumbrances, and anything else that may be needed through the end of the fiscal year. And between all of these departments, between personnel and operations, we have a savings of over $212,000, which is being recommended to use in the following program areas. $50,000 to cover our CDVG match for the application that was just approved. That $20,000 set aside for economic development events has changed to be $2,400, and that's on the actual resolution, the red line version that I handed out, too, so that would be $2,400. $11,241 for additional information technology replacement enhancement for the IT department, and $131,056 to set aside for grant matches for applications. And I've attached that grant application summary from Linda Perry, so you can see what we are applying for and what the matches entail. In total, there was a decrease in personnel throughout all of the departments, $354,000, and that was due to mainly vacancy savings and Phase 2 of the compensation kind not going into effect till this next pay period. And then, $141,000, which is being transferred within seven of the departments for various requests, and that nets are $212,000 that we are recommending to set aside for these other programs or projects. Now, we've talked about trying to get that money and build up our 3/12 reserve, but this is a recommendation that some of these things are in need of replacement. Obviously, CDVG is a $500,000 to $50,000 match, and we need infrastructure improvement, so we do wanna say our reserves are important, but we also need to say our infrastructure, our buildings are important to take care of and do that a little bit longer, if we have the resources to do it. So, that just general fund summary is an overall picture. And I don't know if you wanna stop there and go to the, either the department summary? I guess we could do the department summary, and the actual resolution page, remember, page two, just a good, good look of overall, the departments in general.
So, wanna go to the department summary right now?
Department summary.
And that's the one you just handed out?
And that's the one I just handed out, and then the red line version of the resolution, page two of nine, which just shows the information. So, in the budget policy that was approved in June, which we work off throughout the year, the policy is that when we move money, or we revert, or we add to the budget, we bring it to the council. bring it to the council. So, in essence, like, just example, the executive department, they're requesting eighty one thousand dollars more, so the reason them coming to council for approval. And there's a lot of big anomalies in this bar because of a lot of employee changes that were budgeted in one department and fell into another. So, what I outlined in the department summary is just the bigger ones that you can see in the operations, which is twenty three thousand dollars. We are requesting a movie screening and accessories for events. That was a request from some executive department. So, that's one of the big things that you'll see there, we're increasing it by twenty three thousand dollars. Now, they're gaining the savings from within their own, within other budgets throughout. So, we sort of share the cost for other ones. In judicial, just because it was a big decrease, and we don't want to say that we, the judge didn't do something, or we didn't short him, we have a lot of travel that was budgeted, but they were paid out of the Amation Fund. So, and then he had another travel budgeted out of state, but he never took it. And then also some court, some compensation fund savings, so that's why his budget is decreasing by twenty nine thousand dollars. And my stuff in the finance department, I'm requesting sixty five thousand in net, but I'm using some personnel savings to cover some costs and other stuff for our insurance, which was quite a bit higher at estimating through the end of the fiscal years, fiscal years, some of the deductible claim amounts and some additional costs that may arise. And then three thousand dollars, because we desperately need new monitors in the department. We bought them probably over seven years ago. I T really doesn't have it. We worked with I T to get those, but we really need some big screen dual monitors. And then sixty thousand dollars is for our financial advisor contract, when we get that proposal going. Now, come the end of the year, we get that, and that possibly may not be spent, while that means I will have an excess amount there, and we'll just revert it back. Police department, the request in his is also insurance costs that we didn't receive on dividend credit, and seven thousand for shipping costs for his ten thirty three program, and twelve thousand dollars cost for procurement inventory consulting for the program. So, he's using, within his own savings, he's using that amount, and then reverting forty four thousand dollars to the net cost. Under streets, it's just a really transferring of operating personnel. We had the inspector, construction inspector position originally in construction, in other contractual services, but we actually hired him as a tenth employee, so we're just fixing that amount. Fleet department, and the other ones that don't have an increase, I didn't really go into it, they're just really the cost savings and personnel. The fleet department is increasing approximately four thousand for additional maintenance costs that they've had in the department. They're fixing some of the bigger, some of the equipment there. Facilities is the same, working within their department, they have approximately eleven thousand of ongoing building maintenance that they wanted to increase at this time. And these are just one-time costs for this year. We weren't, we're not going to have two hundred and twelve again next year, but we'll have some savings of this sort. And then in the, let's see, page two is really the I T department, because everybody else is just pretty much personnel cost savings. And I T is increasing, we gave it by sixty five hundred for ongoing maintenance and a new server in the department under their operating budget. So, throughout those, those are the major big changes of increases that weren't really budgeted this year at the beginning of the year. The other adjustments are just correcting line items and moving the monies around where the needs are needed a little bit more, other than these bigger costs that I pointed out to. So, I have, I can separate which is my general fund, which probably is the easiest, or then we go to the whole document, whatever the question is.
Council, Councilor Broughta?
Let me ask some questions on the general fund.
Yes, sir.
On the I T, will you give the server that cheap? Or do we have other funds that just lag too?
This is going to add to it, because we already have seventy eight hundred in there. So, this is going to add to that. And then we also have into his big capital budget, we're going to add that eleven thousand, which is eleven thousand two forty. So, he has his own operating budget, and then we have big capital budget. So, this will add to the whole, the whole thing.
Okay. Sixty five hundred.
Are they paying much?
No, 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 no.
I'll go out and find those myself.
No, no, they're big, and then, and then some maintenance agreement that we need to get for that.
Just very one of the things that I always ask of staff on that first item, the executive one, twenty three thousand dollars for the movie screening, that money not be expended until we have a budget and a proposal of how we intend to create whatever we're trying to create. And then cost to, for the managers, why is some capital that we haven't been able to use, because we didn't have the money to do the project?
And Councilor Broughta, I think this is something that we'll come back to the council for approval, and I don't think we've approved it yet, we're trying to create a budget line item and then go out and see how it's all going to work and have kind of a format to what we're buying, how we're going to put it out to the community, so, and then we can actually, like as you said, we can actually bring it to the council for approval.
Because my concern isn't just looking at the budget in particular for, for those marketing or project lines that they have, it just doesn't seem to be enough to do an awful lot of things that we have ideal in the sky about, so I really want to make sure that we don't do something with this funds that then don't get used, because we could use these funds better somewhere else if we can't do the program. I think it's a great idea, but maybe in the future it's practical.
Basically, Councilman.
So, for...
Let's see, yeah, there was one other thing that I forgot. I didn't realize that we had, this was Mr. Broughta, that we had a construction inspector on staff. I thought that when we had one employee leave, that that was no longer there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, that's correct. This isn't in the building department, I think you're talking about in the streets department. There's two ways we can go about this. We can hire an employee full-time who actually monitors the work that's being done under the contractors, or we can build it into the contractor and have him do it. And what was determined on this, if I recall correctly, is this person was a temporary hire?
Yes, it's a temporary hire.
Because we felt that it was only a short period of time that we would actually need them, and this was the cheapest way to do it.
Okay, so we did put somebody on staff?
Yes.
So, the other question I got very early is on the transfer, I think it transferred out of fifty for the match on the C D G grant?
Yes.
How much do we have in fifty?
In fifty, fifty one? Let me speak right here.
Off the top of your head?
Uh, not much.
Why not just answer that?
We just have...
Not much on the top of your head, or not much on the...
Sorry, no, even well, right there, not... We're projecting an empty balance of forty nine hundred dollars. So, everything that we have in there is allocated for construction already, a Pablo Hall, the Youth and Family Center, I think we had a vehicle, I have it right here, so we don't have really any kind of reserves to use it back.
So, it's all been allocated, so this fifty thousand you're taking out of there now is the last that's basically available for that one?
Well, actually, we're not taking it from there, we're using this excess amount from general fund and putting it in fund fifty, because there is no other revenue source. So, on one side, I have to take it out of general and put it into fifty. So, we're...
Okay, I'm sorry, I will say it, you're right.
Correct. So, because we have...
I dropped the two.
So, that's, that's fifty.
So, this is from reserve funds we have in general fund, you're putting it into fifty for match.
Right. And it's just this extra pot, this money that we're not using right now at this point in time, and we won't need it, because I've estimated through the end of the year with everybody else that we need everything else on this debt.
Linda, let me ask Linda this, what is the anticipation for learning whether or not we are going to get the grant from C D G? Have we made the presentation to C D G council yet or not?
So, the process is the application is due the middle of March, then in April, we do a presentation, and then I believe we find out in June. Rick, do you remember the date? Anyway, I think we find out at the beginning of June whether or not we get the grant, and then it would be effective July one. And that's for the infrastructure grant, the planning grant...
No, I'm just concerned about the infrastructure grant, thank you. So, the monies will actually come in next fiscal year?
That is correct, but we have to identify in the application that we do have money now.
Correct.
And I think that's why Marietta's got that in the line item.
Yes, I have it like that, because our original plan was maybe an infrastructure C D G grant, so we had our fifty thousand dollar match in the street project in the nine nine gas tax, and we can't use that into the facility. So, that's going to free up some fifty thousand dollars for French for other things that he can go forward with maybe now, or going into next year, we'll have that fifty thousand. It is all dependent on what we get, so we had to do it this way. Yeah, I'm sitting around, it's raining.
And then, Marietta, we just want, and then this next year of funding, we want to make sure that, because it'll probably revert back, and we want to make sure we have that fifty thousand dollars for, as Commissioner, I have a...
That guy?
Yeah. Mainly because we will be doing, hopefully, a collaborative project between the town and the county for community, if that's the wishes of the council, because can't say that here, because we haven't identified that project.
We'll just leave that one.
Yeah.
So, that's the reason for this new fifty. So, the next one is just back to the summary I have on just the lodgers tax, and I focus, while obviously general fund is our biggest one, and then the lodger's tax is also a big amount of revenue coming in. So, we've already talked about the decrease of, in the lodger's tax, and currently it's at three point five five for the first five months of the year. And we are projecting a five percent decrease through the end of the fiscal year, which equals about forty three thousand six thirty seven, and that will be decreased from all of the programs that are involved with it, except for the marketing director position. So, the visitor's center had to decrease their budget by thirteen thousand ninety one, which they did automatically with savings, so they're not hurt right now with it. The marketing program twenty one eight nineteen, which we have already adjusted, Joni Griffin's contract by that amount, and then transportation by eight thousand seven twenty seven, which they don't hurt either, because they've had a lot of cost savings on personnel too, so, but we do have to show that, that we're not going to receive that. So, this is all reflective in those departments. And the visitor's center in general is, not in general, I'm talking general, but visitor's center is just transferring back their personnel servings just to their fund balance, whatever they've had saved, they didn't really need to use it. But they are increasing some revenues that they're getting in, their sales and materials, and then their arts and visitor's center, because we did do that increase to their commissions from twenty five to thirty, and seems to be reflecting on it. And so, the more revenues they get in, if they don't spend, it builds up their fund for things that they need at the center itself. And then the transportation department, like I said, is just offsetting it, because they did have twelve thousand dollars in personnel costs and savings. Community grants is just a one hundred and thirty one thousand fifty six dollars into a line item for grant matches that we have, we're applying, we're anticipating these to come in, but in the application process, we need to identify these monies. If we get them, we have them, then we're not looking for them. So, that this time, that's why we're putting the money reserved away, you know, the minute we don't get one, well, then, you know, we can go back and look at those. So, we won't spend them on anything else, except for those grant matches, or something else that may come up, a grant that got dropped, or whatever it may be. So, that's what we're doing in the community grants with additional, if you go back to the red line markup bar, my old school, because it's not just that markup, but if you go to the first page, you'll see that I marked up that we are going to add seventeen thousand six hundred and dollars, seventeen thousand six hundred dollars to the community grants, and twenty four hundred to community, to the, I mean, the grant matches and the community public welfare, which is the local community services project. And we're going to add seventeen thousand six hundred to that line item there. And we originally were going to do twenty into the economic development events, but we've taken that down to twenty four hundred. So, those are the changes that you didn't originally have until right now that I passed that out. And then that's also reflective on page five, where we put the money in and put it in for an expenditure in that fund. And on the confidential informant summary fund, summary, we just have a expenditure that we need to cover from the reserve, and that's three thousand dollars, but we're going to put in six, just in case after here, the chief gets more good advice, to get bad guys, informants to get the best. Seems to be working for him. Capital projects, the only thing we're doing with capital is the fifty thousand dollars for the Youth and Family Center, and also putting in the grant right away, the grant revenue, just anticipated, so we have to come back with you, we'll have to come back with a grant agreement, but we're putting it in the budget for that, because we do have to show both of those with the application, we have to show the financial statements. And then affordable housing, the economic development line item changes to twenty four hundred, and all of them make the changes to the summary to reflect the actual resolution. And then the affordable housing, we have a professional services line item, and we're increasing this by seven thousand five hundred to cover people, cause, and information, maybe wetnesses to the emergence to the affordable housing project. And then I just have the summary on the enterprise funds. Really, we're just decreasing personal costs on the plan and operating costs, wastewater, asking for a little additional repair maintenance. The solid waste fund, we're asking thirty five thousand six eighteen from the unreserved fund to cover the estimated costs through the end of the fiscal year. Debbie has run her calculations, and based on the annual, the first six months of the bills for us, the town's house to pay the line bill fee, tipping fee, and then waste management to pay the fee to them, it's running twenty two for the town and twenty three for them, a little short. Now, those are based on estimates, but we want to cover it, and if we don't use it, well, we'll have it, but we just need to put it in just in case, based on her six years, six months of an estimate. And those fluctuate, you know, customers come in, they go out, we just did the three percent increase, the C P I increase, so we'll have a good picture, well, obviously, at the end of the year, but that's what that is for.
Councilman Broughta?
We're still talking about the solid waste fund?
Yes, I'm on that one.
So, you're saying that at this point in time, I guess, Mr. Broughta, we're going to be short thirty five thousand dollars in operating revenues over what we bring in in billing?
Well, well, why am I going to say that? I can run that scenario where our cash over revenues is still over what we're extending out, but it's getting close to just being a pretty much complete wash. So, I can bring that back. So I can bring that back to you on the third one?
No, no, I'm just asking a question, so... What you're saying, what you're saying right now, though, is that we're going to be short by the end of the year?
Right.
And we're not bringing up, bringing in as much revenue as the expenditures are going out. And can, do you have an idea of where, Mr. Brothel, where this shortfall is occurring? Is it in pickup, or is it in disposal?
Actually, let me get my financial statement because I do have the actual revenue source, how it's coming in. And I was just taking this, this currently from the fund dollars right now, instead of projecting out these revenues because they fluctuate, it depends on the billing cycle and all that, but let me grab that.
Does this, most of this have to do with our contract with waste management?
With waste management, and then also the tipping fee went up substantially in July, but we didn't account for that. And so, you know, I think we're experiencing for the first six months, you know, just getting a feel of what that's really looking at with the fee imposed on ourselves through the landfill board. So I think a combination of both, and then the grander three percent cost increase of those fees, but we account for that also in our, in our calculation when we do the budget. You know, we put the three percent fee on there, so...
Well, my question is, though, is some of the shortfall because we're not charging our customers enough to cover the cost of handling their solid waste?
That's, that's part of it. But we did increase it also, too. We had to increase the disposal fee, so...
I understand, what I'm understanding is that Mr. Brothel's looking at it from a standpoint of operational rather than financial, is do we have a situation here maybe where we did increase the cost to our customers to cover what our expenditures are out there in hauling the trash to the landfill? Because it is length of a separate budget. So do we need to look at for our next year's budget as part of the straight process and increase again payments fees?
Yes. I think what Marietta was saying was, at this point, since the rate increase, we haven't really had a stable floor to measure against. But certainly, if it continues one more month, then I think that's what we discussed last time. We're definitely going to have to look at that.
Yes, well...
So in our unrestricted reserves that we have for solid waste, tell us, do you have any?
Too much. Never have too much, right? We have over seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of buildup from years of years.
And that's strictly solid waste?
That's strictly solid waste and recycling. And our revenue right now is at fifty-two percent through the end of December, so it's... The revenue is, it's not like down tons of percent, it's just keeping flat right there. So it's at two, fifty-two percent right now through the end of December. So there's, like we said, we don't have enough of history to look at it, but it could be both.
And Mr. Brothel, Marietta, on that seven hundred thousand dollars we have in there in some restricted reserve, is that possible to be allocated for other than solid waste? Or is it restricted?
It is restricted to solid waste and recycling.
I'm just trying to figure out what we can do with solid waste to bring that reserve down
And use it.
Without, you know, but still anticipating that, you know, year to year, you should always be covering your costs year to year by...
Right.
By, you know, by your revenues, so... I'm just saying, since we don't collect, we don't use light vehicles and that sort of thing.
Right, we don't. So that has been a buildup of years. I can run like a five-year history to show the re-coring over and under and see how we look. I think I have that already somewhat, but I've done that. And offset the recycling versus the solid waste site, just to see if we're putting more to recycling, less to read into this solid waste, or whatever it may be. But they're together. And they're both together.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, as part of the straight process, let's keep looking at funding.
I wish I could just... Well, give it, but I'm just kidding.
I'm just wondering, what, hold, qualify yourself?
Well, look, and I'll look at the ordinance. We'll pull the ordinance, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question, Jim.
Okay, so am I good on that one?
You were at on utility?
Oh, yes.
Utility construction fund?
Okay. So that's it. Oh, no, two more. So the landfill, regional task regional landfill. We're requesting twenty-eight thousand, seventy-one from the unreserved fund balance, and this is to cover estimated engineering costs associated with the permit modification and stormwater pollution prevention fund. Now, we're going to have to take this to the board, but I will get to the council for approval as fiscal agent, and then we'll take it back to the board and have them look at it and review it. But there is a concern or a question that I have on that SWIP, if it's, if it's for the closure, and any way to use the closure cost to cover that amount, I don't know. That closure fund is so touchy that we don't want to, but we'll run it by EZ and I'll run it by French and run. So that's what their increases are, and then just the modification, timing, and the additional work I think that they had to do on it. So this is going to happen. We do have those reserves in the landfill fund, but, you know, we were another one trying to build it up, and I'm waiting to get a cost estimate for consultants to look at our rate, how it's flowing in that same sense, too. So a couple things on that, but we're going to take that to the board to the next meeting. And then utility improvements fund is just additional sixteen thousand from the reserve, which in that fund we have a healthy reserve also to cover a final cost in the chamber for coming, or said, on the water distribution of the project. I'm not too, French is that, is French? French is that, yeah?
No.
So cool. So I couldn't tell you about the chamber in general. So that, that is a summary of what we're doing right now. All the red lines. Oh, no, no, I do want to talk about number, page, page six. We have our fund fifty-three, which we call Fund Fifty-Three, and in discussion with the council owner, Phil, and myself, DFA, the mayor, just trying to re-identify this fund because it's a one-time maintenance capital cost. We're not using any capital money, we're using carryover money from general funds last year's excess revenue. So I asked DFA, they said, if you take it out of your capital category and put it in your special revenue fund and call it other special revenue fund, one-time, whatever, the same title, then I don't have to do too much accounting stuff, I just have to reclassify it into the fund. And I should be good with that. And no journal entry here, no budget adjustments, just reclassifying it. And I said, if I just name it on the bar, she said that should be fine. And I reported under their two ninety-nine fund on DFA.
Councilman Brothel? I think, Mr. Mayor, in speaking from the iron committee, I think we would agree that that would be a better location for the fund than living fifty-one category in the capital projects.
I know, not a chance you'd have a lot of it, put in the right category. Okay, and that would be...
Thank you, Mayor.
And...
Mr. Mayor, and you, you and Councilman Brothel specifically asked for converts to CAD. And I did want to address that, that their request was for thirty-six thousand dollars. They subsequently received six thousand dollars from the county. We had given them twenty-four hundred dollars. I asked Linda to have a conversation with them in regards to since we're halfway through the year, whether they needed that full amount or not. And there was a compromise reached that they felt they had roughly eight to nine thousand dollars worth of building maintenance concerns, HVAC, plumbing, other issues. And that if we could assist them with that, they could get away with the twenty thousand dollars we proposed. What I would suggest is that we fund that as has been indicated here with, your page one, with that seventeen thousand, six hundred belonging to twenty-four hundred. We're taking that seventeen thousand, six hundred out of the events money, considering the short season we have here for doing events in the spring. If, at the end of this, they do need the additional ten thousand dollars, we do have areas, particularly in the grant match that we've taken from, and also in a landscaping project. But my concern is that their grant year is January, and they've already put in for a new grant, and as I understand, they've been awarded that grant, which commits us to another thirty-six thousand dollars. And I, I think that's not a prudent idea that clearly they're preferring maintenance on facility, and our agreement providing that facility is that the organization is using it to maintain the building. And I think we're in an unfortunate position that we're almost forced to have to make those repairs to protect our investment in the building. So that thirty-six thousand is actually starting to increase, and I think I would, if I was running the agency, I'd be a little reluctant to be committing money that we're not even going to be able to commit for another six months. And I guess those are just words of precaution.
So with that?
Yes, of course, I'm not quite clear on what I understood in that, in the last analysis, so... Are, are we recommending that we pay the twenty thousand dollars this six months, and then what is we requested for next fiscal year is going to be thirty-six thousand?
That's my understanding.
So there would be something that we would look at in the straight process for the following year anyway, so it's not something that we should concern, but accept it looking at, at a long-term plan or the agency, that we would have to look at how, how we go forward. You know, there's, part of this, you know, I want to say is from a philosophical and moral situation that I feel that we as a community, and us as, as representatives of that community have in a sense, an obligation to take care of those unfortunate in ourselves, and particularly those people who are victims of domestic bonds. And come into a situation that is not of their own making, but is made upon them. And so I think it's, it's like taking care of, of the stray animals in our community. We have an obligation to take care of those most fortunate citizens that we have as well. And I would hope that, you know, our counterparts in the county commission look at it in the same way and assist, you know, those citizens that, that they represent in the same way to, to make it, you know, a program that is going to continue to provide the service they're needed. And that's, and that's a difficult situation with all of the economy within, in, in the community, but it's, it's one of those things we have to look long and hard at back there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I absolutely agree with you, and that was, I guess, where I was leading with that, is that perhaps since we share similar expenditures in regards to some of these other community need programs, we can have a dialogue with the county in regards to this, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Marietta?
Uh, no, I miss anybody else has anything else on. Pretty much done. Until, not then, until you raise that one.
Any further questions? You mean, yes, Mr. Lopez? Oh, okay.
He has ready for the next one.
Oh, okay. Anything else? What's the wishes of the council, move or approve? We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second?
We have a second, further discussion, if any.
Raise that with my changes, my red mark changes. Okay. Thank you.
Comfortable?
Councilor Trump?
Yes.
Councilor Hunt?
Yes.
Councilor Hunt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marietta. A lot of hard work, but you got it done. So a lot of sleepless nights, I know. So go on to UNM purchase of Taos Convention Center, Mr. Lopez. Discussion, consideration, possible approval, and encroachment agreement, an encroachment and non-exclusive access easement agreement, and amendment to UNM purchase and sale in all involving the Taos Convention Center. Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Your considerations are a amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, an encroachment agreement, and an encroachment and non-exclusive access easement agreement, all in connection with the sale of the Taos Convention Center to UNM for use as the Health Sciences Facility at one-twenty-one Civic Closet Drive. I've handed to council member, um, two, from, to pass down through the council, a plaque that shows three encroachments that are identified after we entered into the purchase and sale agreement. Two, one, two building encroachments and an overhang encroachment, which, two of which are addressed in the encroachment agreement that's attached under an obvious disengend item. The other is a overhang and an easement.
Well, you want to hang up, one second? We don't have a quorum right now, so hang on. They need, they need to breathe, they're not there.
Sorry, I was reading my papers instead of...
And we, we can't even breathe.
I guess this isn't a very interesting topic.
I'm not going to leave you, I just wanted to... Oh, okay.
Mr. Lopez? I guess while we're waiting. Steve, I have the issue, and I, I believe we had handled this one earlier, but there's a storage building between the firehouse and the convention center. I believe that was coordinated in agreement of sale, was it correct?
I think there's a me nows to that effect, but we'd better clarify all of that before we sign the closing. So let's make a list of everything. There's also this twenty thousand dollar sculpture. And then we have that other list that I've given to you of the stage platform. I'm sorry, Melinda, we should have tried to move you up.
Well, you know, I've brought work with me, and I'm a lot more done than I get at my office.
No, no, we'll see for a five-minute break? Or a couple-minute break? Yeah, do we have a second for that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Call for the board.
Well, she's back.
I need, I need...
Yes.
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 Just a few minutes. Okay, may I have a motion to back up session? Hold on. And a second. All the favors issued by the... Okay, Mr. Lopez, we were, it's your matter.
So the amendment is to include the encroachment agreement as part of the closing documents. The encroachment agreement is to allow, the town allows UNM to encroach on its property as shown by the, two of the encroachments on the plaque. And the final document is an encroachment and non-exclusive easement agreement with the Taos Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., which is the town of Taos, which is going to be executed prior to the closing with UNM, which allows the overhang and also a non-exclusive easement in the alley behind the building to, to on behalf of the grantee, which is the town, which will be assigned to UNM in close. So we're recommending the approval of all three of these documents.
Second, discussion, Mr. Lopez, this won't create any long-term, you know, problems? Not call for the vote.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes. The resolution fifteen oh eight regarding storm drain at UNM Health Science Center, Mr. Lopez.
That is a resolution that's prepared and is for your consideration to allow the continued storm drainage from the same location, 121 Civic Plaza, into the storm sewer. And it doesn't change anything, it's just since we're changing orders that it would allow the continued use.
Counsel? Move. Motion and a second. Discussion, call for the vote.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead. Item F, domestic violence links with Community Against Violence. Mr. Lopez, discussion, consideration and possible approval of lease agreement. The Community Against Violence for a Divested Violence Shelter, six forty-five Salud de Zar compound, Texas, Mexico.
This is a lease agreement that's prepared with the town as less saw and the Community Against Violence as less see. It's a stated price of nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars per month, which is the fair market value of the leased premises and actually it's in return for the services that is listed, that are listed under paragraph three, to be provided to the town by Community Against Violence. And it's for the term this fiscal year ending June 14th.
Counsel? Move or approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Will it?
No, I just said this is a domestic and sexual violence and child abuse center and we greatly appreciate the support that historically the town of Taos has given us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So call for the vote.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
And just to note, upon execution by the mayor, this would be submitted to local governments to raise it for their approval as well.
Thank you. Okay, so, so under town manager's port, then, we go to Town House Municipal Local Economic Government Act ordinance, lead. Ms. Bellis, is that you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had forward copies of the redline version and the clean version, original version to council and they are attached through notice on web. What we'd like at this time is to have permission from council to set a date for a public hearing as this is an ordinance, a new amendment. We require at least thirty days, so I think three ten would probably be cutting it up a bit too close given the newspaper deadlines, so unless you want a special meeting on three seventeen, which is next Tuesday, we could bring, we could schedule it for the regular meeting day of three twenty-four.
Counselman Barta?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Bellis, has the planning zoning commission reviewed this and given a recommendation?
I'm sorry, Councilman, can you say it again?
Has the planning zoning commission reviewed this and given a recommendation or does this have to go through them? Is this part of the planning process or within the planning zoning ordinance? I'm asking a question, so just to make sure that we're fulfilling the requirements of our own code.
It has not, but as you're aware, changes can be made to this and we will bring it to them. Excuse me, in fact, there's a joint meeting coming up of the historic commission and the planning zoning commission and we'll present it to them.
Because I think our ordinance requires that anything that's in the planning zoning is required to be reviewed by them prior to the council and recommended and modified by them if necessary. So I just don't want to have somebody come back and say, you didn't follow proper procedures so therefore you may as not leave it. And that's the reason I'm saying that just like anything else that we bring up to, we change the code on zoning or even residential zoning on the annexed properties that we do has to proceed through them before it comes to the council, so.
Yes. Yeah, in the three twenty-four meeting, we'll do that or if you want to put this up to, put this off till our, we have it for the planning zoning commission. The changes are pretty minimal, as you're aware, they're just a few phrases that compliance with the changes that stay there.
I don't know that they need us to hold a public hearing, but I think that you would need to review it and recommend to us. And I don't want to extend any further of these amendments because we need to get this in place in order for us to proceed with any individuals or companies or you come in and do economic alone and partner with the town, so. And I think we're kind of behind the gun on some things that we haven't talked about.
So the finding forth is a good date if everything works correctly? Okay. So we need to publish. So do we have a councilman for ordinance?
It's, Rick has never been a date posted yet for that treaty between PNC and historic presentation.
It hasn't been forwarded yet because the one project under consideration, which is the development of the emergency facility, just came in. And to be honest with you, I just might remember, I may have what that date is, but I can relate to you or came in and sent it to you all over here. Okay, thanks.
So do we need action on this, Ms. Bellis?
Yeah, yes, I'd like a motion from council to set a date for hearing and direct staff to publish that date accordingly along with a copy of the ordinance.
So give me the date.
That would be March twenty-fourth, Tuesday.
Move for a public hearing on the changes to leader on March twenty-fourth. Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not call for the vote.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll go on to public forum on downtown issues Thursday, February twelfth at six p.m. Bellis?
This was strictly informational item. This is the second of what we anticipated through meetings and I have forwarded and advertised the subject matter for this meeting, which would be the Arts and Culture District. We decided the town to continue that. Decided the town to pursue Main Street district or in lieu of neither those, is there a need for a downtown business association that the town can work with? And there will be a presentation beginning by a representative of the New Mexico Economic Development Department in regards to Main Street, ACD, both the status report of where we are, what they need from us to continue those programs and to be able to answer any questions from the council or the public at that time.
Questions and thoughts on this? Not? We'll see most everybody on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, so then on, and that will be posted right on the resume?
Yes.
Okay, and then, any other matters, Ms. Bellis?
Not at this time.
We have job interviews on, opportunities on Friday, is UNM?
Friday, we're in discussion with two planning department candidates, honey, and both are still interested and Friday will be both an opportunity to interview and select a marketing and tourism director. And we'll be, with that, we will be bringing a copy to you of the Obama Star F P for marketing services similar to the perfect contract.
Okay. So then we'll go on to matters and reports from the mayor. We need an appointment for the Holy Cross Hospital nomination board and, you know, this is one of those positions, it's usually a one-time thing, you meet one time and that's it. And we usually pass it around maybe twice. I know I've sat on it a couple of times at the county and I think Councillor Gonzalez sat on it this last year and my recommendation, since Councillor Han spends a lot of time there, we'd like to nominate him as that member, as a nominee, nominated, sit on the nominating committee. You have a second to that?
I wasn't gonna, I don't know if he spends a lot of time there, it's at all for meetings there, so you always refer back to us, so.
Okay. Nomination and a second to that? Call for the vote.
Do you need the motion?
Well, I made a nomination because I think that's.
Okay, so you need a nomination.
Or, I guess it's an appointment, the way I understand it, so I, so I don't know how that.
Well, we would be confirmed.
Right, right. So I'll move to confirm the appointment. Give me a second.
That's okay.
Call for the vote.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
I'll stand. So a lease agreement to Taos County for the Ancianos Senior Center, discussion consideration and possible approval of lease. I believe we have that lease in our packet. Oh. We didn't get it on there.
Mr. Mayor, this is not to be requested beyond the agenda. I don't believe that council had time to prepare a lease agreement.
Okay. Apologize, I thought it was already on there. I guess we need to give direction to staff on how the council wants to move on this. This, you know, this is a, they need a lease agreement to be able to move forward in their funding possibilities so that they can basically do some remodeling, or I don't know if it's remodeling, but do some upgrades to the facility, so.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we issue a staff to create a lease for one dollar a year for five years annually renewable and be a triple net lease, which means that the county will be responsible for all maintenance, repairs and upgrades to the facility while they're leasing.
Okay. We'll get a.
That'll allow them then to get funding?
Yes, it will.
So I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes.
Counselor?
How many buildings do we own, send me? Could we own this one?
That includes our house.
And all the houses, six million properties. But, you know, I'm fully supportive of Councilman Barta's motion, but I, I sure would like to just give this building to the county and be done with it.
Counselor? I'll let you because.
I think the only reason I can change is Councillor Han's. You know. Mr. Mayor, I could go back, I says, I don't mind giving, getting rid of the building, but not for free.
Let's sell it to him for a buck. It's a discussion item, so that's just my thought, I'm wondering what other concerts, how would the concerts feel about that?
I think we should get into the, into the lease, it's important, Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to the Councilman. I think we need to get into this lease and then start a discussion with the county as to the future of the facility and whether or not, you know, they really want it, maybe even after one year of being the operator of the facility, then they want to give it to somebody else.
And Councilman Han, you know, in being part of that, you know, when we bought that land over there for the construction of that new facility, the price per square foot was pretty substantial, so the land that it sits on is, the building might not be worth that much, but the land over there is pretty valuable. I learned when we, when we bought that, other portions of. Councilman, Councilwoman, continue.
I, I'd like to see the county get that building as well.
Just as a reminder, Mr. Mayor, the convention center started out as a lease for a dollar a year and then this year we're selling it to you for dollars, so that's how the history of that went.
It'd be nice to use some leverage, it'd be nice to have a little something to help with the family youth center, you know, so, I mean, it might be a little leverage to help with that, you know. So we do have a motion and we do have a second on the floor. Steve? Mr. Henry?
Yes, sir. If I could, could you please, and I didn't hear you say specifically, because we're no problem, could you please include capital improvements?
Yes, we do.
All right, sure, let's check.
That's the, when you say a triple net?
Yes.
Means they have to do everything.
Okay. Just want to be completely clear.
And if you have to pay taxes, they'd have to pay them too.
So thank you. So call for the vote already, call for.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Yes.
Yes.
So under other matters, I just, I had Mr. Espinoza come in because I know that we're getting, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of potholes coming up in the community and I know that we had a very good meeting with the DOT a couple of weeks ago and they explained how they take care of them and I just want, Mr. Espinoza, if you would, just kind of give us a little briefing on, you know, what we have and, you know, how people can report potholes and a number that they can call and how we're addressing this and what type of funding we have and you go from there.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
And then I'll have one additional question that was raised earlier in the meeting about SDS place, I believe? Yes.
Commissioner, members of the council, at your request last week, Commissioner, I put together a, kind of like a tell-all of potholes and how they develop and how we attempt to fix them and not fix them correctly. So I did that and I got with Rick and reviewed it with him and at his recommendation, it was asked that we put that on the Town House website and I believe Conrad is probably working on completing that today. And basically it's, again, it's just a little tidbit of information on potholes, but attached to that is a repair request form that we're asking people to fill out and it doesn't have to be anything fancy as long as it identifies the location and we will determine if it's within the town corporate limits or Taos County or on the state roads. If we get those types of requests, we will forward them to the appropriate agency. In addition to that, Mr. Mayor, I did, I did speak with you and I had let you and Rick both know that now with the mid-year bars, we did move some money around and we're asking for a combined twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars so that we can start to perform these pawl repairs. In addition to that, in the new budget, which will be coming around in July, I'll request another chunk of money to continue to repair those potholes as they surface. They can, the general public can call our, our office and county usually takes pretty good notes of that and records where the pawl is and dispatches crews out to, to address them. At present, the way we are fixing the potholes is we'll either use a cold mix as was suggested by the district fire engineer and we get a boom and we've been doing that for years. On the larger potholes, what we're doing is adding in Portland cement to the base course and what that does is, is once it draws the moisture out of the hole, the idea is that the Portland cement will harden up and kind of act like a, a dry concrete. And basically that's what we're doing to, to address the pawl issue in the Town House.
Counsel, Councilman Han?
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. So, maybe the staffing, do you have staff to deal with? maybe the staffing, do you have staff to deal with all the repairs?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brana, if, if we, if we coordinate the efforts, we probably do if we're asked to, to start performing more work, and just probably, no, we don't. Along with, with management of these potholes, we are sweeping on a daily basis. And the crews are gearing up to start sweeping down the sidewalks, starting, starting in the historic district and working their way out. And anything else that comes up?
So I'm sure you already do this, being a professional, I'm sure, but just as regards staffing, if you could stay, and I'm sure you already do it, but staying close touch with the manager. I was awake all last night thinking about potholes and dust, believe it or not, this job is getting to me. But my, my number one concern is that do you have the manpower to do it? I'm hearing you say for the moment, yes. And I would just encourage you to rely on our manager to get you additional support if needed. Second question I have is, how about materials out at the yard, are, do you have the mixes that you need out there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brana, what we do is we have a, a line item that is lumped together to purchase material. And that material consists of base course, salt and sand for snowing, cold patching, and hot mix. So if we, if we have a really difficult wet winter, obviously the money will go to purchase salt and sand for snowing. The, the good thing about this winter is we haven't had to replenish our stock yet. But if we do get more snow, we'll have to start replenishing that. The balance of that will go towards other materials for pothole repair.
So for the moment, you've got enough materials?
At the moment, yeah.
And you'll stay in close touch with the manager and that. And then just for my own information, and this is really kind of a dumb question, for your average pothole, say, one foot by one foot by six inches, what's the total cost of filling one hole? I mean, just ballpark before me finish. That way I can really appreciate when I see the guys out there filling it, and I can go, there's two hundred and fifty bucks. And I just think the public would be interested too.
I'm, I'll, I'll give you a number, but it's not going to be correct.
It's ballpark.
Yeah, I, I would say anywhere from eighty-five to one hundred and twenty-five bucks.
So a hundred bucks a shot? Is that enough? Also, all of my dumb questions, thank you.
And, so thanks, French, you know, as, you know, snow and winter and all this hits, you know, we always, you know, you guys do a good job in trying to, you know, keep down the ice, and, and, you know, try to make the roads passable and stuff, and consequently, we've created salt and cinders and sand and all over the place, and now, you know, what is your protocol for cleanup after this, you know? And, you know, again, this is just so, you know, the public knows, I know we get a lot of feedback, especially on the merchants around the plaza. You know, I walked around there day before yesterday, and people say, oh, we've been cleaning it up, and I said, well, we have a sweeper, and we've been proactive, I think that thing runs every day, that there's not ice on the ground, and, so, just.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, again, as, as weather permits, we will run the sweeper from six a.m. till four p.m. With the exception of when he's clean and getting a bite to eat. And again, we try to do that after every snowfall, we do, we do understand the importance of trying to keep the plaza and the, and and the surrounding area clean. And so what we do is we target the historic district before we migrate into other areas of the town of Taos. And we do that in early morning hours, simply because there are no vehicles on the plaza. In the event that we can't get to it, such as was the case this last year, and we went and asked La Fonda not to allow people to park there so that we can go in with the backhoe and scrape the, the ice out from under the vehicles. But again, it's difficult when the, when the plaza's full of vehicles and.
And, and then, do we have a time period, you know, where we do a big washdown, you know, we try to do that twice a year on the plaza, go through, and I don't know if the fire department is involved in that, and they actually, you know, hose it down and try to clean it up, and is there a certain time period that we do that too?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we usually do it in, in March, and what we ask is that the, that the town manager and governing body allow the town staff to either take off a morning or an afternoon so that they may participate in the, in the community-wide cleanup. We also try and coordinate with, with Taos County's litter patrol day. And, and again, we do that in March, and the, the public works crews, and the firemen, and the parks crews draw out their hoses and brooms and whatnot, doing a, a thorough muffle of, again, the historic district. And maybe we target the plaza and the parking lots.
Thank you, during that period of time, need extra help involved, and you have to look for help.
Well, we also ask that the officials participate.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barata?
Mr. Mayor, two things, one, first of all, what was the lease that you had about using family centers water, monitoring, or what was that? Couple of nights ago?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brana, I, I can't recall how the, or who installed that water line. When we went to go fix it, we, we found that there was about two foot of cover on it. So what we're thinking happened was the, the water line actually froze sometime back, and now that the warmer weather is is upon us, when it thawed out, it bust the line, or when, when the ice expanded, it bust the line that was underneath because it was frozen.
Who did that thing?
It was, it's, it's, the, the good thing is that the, the line is actually looped, so we were able to isolate at the intersection of Sunset and Coloris Avenue, so it didn't affect anybody. After, after we isolated it.
So how was it reported to you, or reported to you, surface?
I, I believe that there was a call that went into the yard, or according to the office. The other thing we found out on that is, when they built the round of that, they actually paved over some of the water wells. So, again, it's kind of difficult to isolate the line when you can't access the valve. So, but, but the guys did a, a decent job of taking care of it in a timely manner.
Thank you, because I was walking out there the next morning, and I saw the streets, and that's why I asked. Also, at the, and I can't remember the street, but where the pavement ends, at the end of, and goes north to, not east, to Loa Parra?
Yes.
The snowplow hit the manhole cover, and it's pushed off of the manhole disc a little bit. You know, I've been meeting partners on that, so, so you guys can get it back in place. You need to put something to around it because it's a little bit elevated, so it wasn't a fault of the way. The last thing I have is, do, do you have a schedule for when you sweep the streets, as far as, you know, Mondays we do Pasero, Tuesdays we do whatever?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brana, we, we do have a new schedule, and we will have to provide that to you. Again, on, on a daily basis, what we, what we do is we try to target the plaza and the historic district. But yes, we do have a roadmap.
It might be worthwhile to post that, maybe on a website, and so that people don't park on the street when you need to get in and clean.
Yeah, and, and usually we have that, we have that issue on the plaza, the douche tree. And sometimes on the carstino, however, that's, that's gone away a little bit.
I'll give you an example on top of that. In Santa Monica, where my daughter lives, on Wednesdays, Tuesdays, Wednesday, I think it is, you have to park on the opposite side of the street, because they'll come through and clean one side, and then they'll go back and clean the next day, clean the other side. And they give you a specific time when you have to be off the street, and if you're, if you're there, you're fine. So, you know, it's just something for us to consider, in order for us to keep our image in, or our streets would be something like that, is that, you know, if we identify, say, or even with signs on the street saying that between six o'clock and eight o'clock in the morning, this side of the street is going to be cleaned on Mondays. And then we ensure that most people will be out of your way, and don't have that issue.
Right, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brana, I love your opinion, and what we'll do is we'll, we'll get with waste management to see what they're out there. That way we're not disrupting traffic more than what we need to if it's already being disrupted by waste management.
Thank you. Thank you, French, and the other one is SDS Place, I believe it is. And the way I, I think we're looking at the map, and the map comes down, and it dips into Taos County, depending on where you live on SDS Place, I think one part of the road is town, and a part of the road is town, I'm not sure. Maybe you can look it up, and, and, Mr. O'Connell, if you can, address it with him, and, and see if it's in town. Because we want to get on him on our ICIP list for future, but if it's not a county road, I mean, if it's not a town road, we want to make sure it's, and he's not.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I had talked to Mr. Echol.
Echol?
Echol. And I brought a, at my computer, a crazy map of mine that shows the town's boundaries, and he showed me where he lives, and he does live outside of town.
Outside of town?
On S Place, and he showed me where he lives in Southside.
I thought it was, yeah.
Yeah, I, I want to comment too, I, I appreciate all of you guys, because I know, as I've spoken to you, you have forty-four miles in Broadway, right, and eight crew members to, to help. The, the street sweeper, is that one of the eight?
It is.
It is, okay, because there's got to be some different way of, of doing things, I, I Like days like today, when it's beautiful, it's been beautiful for the last three or four days, everything's dry, the snow's melting. Sometimes you need water. I have a leak blower on my own property, and I clean my properties, but sometimes I need water because it's just filthy dirty. And when the street sweeper sweep, I really feel like there needs to be a following day where you get that water truck, or you can actually spray the streets and, and freshen everything up, because it's, it's so dirty, and, and this time of year, it's so critical. It reflects on, on the town, the, the, the citizens of Taos, whether they're town or county, are saying, ah, nobody's paying attention. You know, the tourists who are here, you know, are used to other places where it's probably, you know, city maintained differently. But when people are saying, oh, well, the plaza is a dirt, a dirt road again, now, because it's, it's got to the point where it's so filthy. If there's a roster you could put out that we could get to, to give us a schedule of when the street sweeper's going, when the water truck is going to spray off, you know, and spraying off the sidewalks. There's just so many little details, and, and I know you're short, Hannah, is there any other departments that might be able to, in the wintertime, help in public works, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Manager, to, to just clean the town up?
Yeah, actually, Facilities Department cleans parking lots in northern of that, sidewalks, tries to help build the streets here. But they're limited, had plow, we just had one street sweeper. But I agree with you, Councilwoman, sidewalks in particular, when we, we sweep the street, and push the dirt up on the sidewalk, and then people go to walk on it, that's probably worse than it being in the street. We'll, we'll examine how we can do a better job of that, I'll get together with French.
Thank you. Appreciate it, French, maybe brings back some ideas, or Councilwoman, if you come up with any, too.
Well, I've been spraying the city sidewalks around my property for over twenty years, I, I want to be reimbursed.
Thank you, French, appreciate it, I know you was on shortlist, and I asked you to come over, and I appreciate you accommodating us, and and just giving, you know, the public an idea, and, you know, again, you know, some of the streets are DOT, some are our county, and some are our town, and we want to make sure that, you know, we get them addressed if we can, and Councilwoman Brana?
Just thought, came to you, French, is, do we have any way of wrapping those shallow water lines to keep them from freezing? I, I, I think I know why they're frozen, that is because we had such a warm fall and a lot of moisture, and it's seeped in, and it froze down, which normally we don't have, and that's probably what cracked it. And probably over the last two or three years, they've cracked a couple times and finally popped, but I'm just wondering, do they make anything that those can be wrapped in and help them from freezing?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Brana, yes, they do, and the water superintendent is already looking into costs to, to get that wrapped, we, we have another one of those, those types of water lines on historic road across the little bridge. And in the past, it has popped before, so.
So we have an order, probably we should come over that bridge?
We do, however, that one does have sufficient cover, and if I remember correctly, when, when when they put it over the bridge, they kind of wrapped it with, with the foam and some plastic on the water side. So we've been fortunate that that one hasn't, hasn't frozen and popped at all. The other thing that helps off those water lines is the movement of water, so if, if there's a lot of water, it, it, it does help. However, the water kind of closes since it's looped, it's, the water's actually, or, or the subdivision is actually being fed.
Also, also to Adobe?
Also to Adobe, yes.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Espinoza, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Steve, do we have, like, over the county, when we got the complex today, we're going to have to do a lot of maintaining the sidewalks, is that you got like a small tractor that is used to, to, you know, a little brush that they have?
We, we have a, a brush that we use to clean the sidewalk.
That's streets, not facilities?
Well, I understand, but can't you mark them?
Mission creep here, sir, we have to clean the sidewalk. We'll be getting better at that.
I know, Mr. Tree was here, the audience, Dean's the supervisor at the Anciano Center, and Mike, we, you know, it was approved today that they'll be drafting up a lease, for a five-year lease with you guys, for a dollar, so that'll be drafted up, and we'll get assigned and get it over to you guys.
Okay, just to let the.
Come on up with Mike, if you would, I appreciate it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, audience, just to give you a briefing now, we do have a hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars already that was approved through a general obligation bond in November, the voters, they should be getting those agreements now in September to renovate the Lovato Senior Center, we did do some work, approximately sixty thousand dollars worth of work for remediation in a section of roofing that was leaking, so that's been taken care of, and then now through Cinnabon, Cinnabon one fifty-nine, and last year So that's been taken care of. And then now through Senegal 159 and last year through the transition, I submitted a $134,000 Catalat request to the Alliance for the Mexico Long Term Services Division. And out of 33 proposals, 60 were approved and we were one of them. So we should be getting an additional $134,000 this legislative session to add to the $182,500 for renovations on the Filovato Senior Center. So we are making progress. We certainly appreciate you getting this lease up to date because I don't think we'd be able to expend the funds if we don't have a lease for the town, so. So thank you. We're making progress. We've increased our home-delivered meals and our, actually program, we're 103% over last year on everything, but our home-delivered, we're about 119% over. So especially in the town proper area where the street tolls on us, we've increased our home-delivered meals. We served approximately 38,000 meals from July till January. So that's quite a bit of meals that we were providing for our seniors, plus the respite and homemaker services. So we're making progress. We're having, we have people on waiting lists, especially for our transportation and our home-delivered because we don't have the staff for home, we're short on drivers. Our midtown route, which includes the town proper, has tripled since January. So we're doing well there, but we just don't have the vehicles. But now with the new general obligation, but we did get $295,000. So we're going to be buying some new vehicles in September. So we'll be, and then of course, I do want to thank the RTD and Mayor Barone and that we were able to, they were able to donate two blue buses for use because, again, we're seven vehicles down. Matter of fact, I had another one break down in Amada at this point, so I'm trying to find some vehicles so they can provide services up there. But these blue buses will be able to utilize for transporting our people to the doctors, to appointments and so on and so forth. And it's got a handicap accessible, it's got a wheelchair ramp, which is important because right now we don't have a means to do that. So those buses are going to certainly help us, so. With that, I just want to give you a brief update and I stand for questions if there's any. If not, I certainly want to thank you for the lease agreement and for helping our senior program. I did sign the agreement with your Community Development Director for the amount of money that you guys provided to the senior program. So we'll be submitting an invoice for services soon so we can continue to provide services. So again, I want to thank the Council and the Mayor for all their assistance. So with that, there's anything?
Councilor?
Thank you, Mr. T. And Mr. Mayor, that's great news about the blue buses. One of the issues that we had with the hospital was, and one of our goals in TRD meetings was to pick up elders and get them to their doctor's appointments and stuff. Are we doing that now? Or is it just through once a house?
What we do right now is we're on an appointment base. Our seniors will call us the day before, 24 hours in advance, will call us to where they have to be at. So we try to schedule appointments. We do take them to the hospital quite a bit. We do take them to the doctors' offices. Again, we've had to kind of curtail those services because we haven't had a means of transporting them, especially the ones that are, that need wheelchair accessibility. But now that we get these vehicles, we'll be able to start doing it.
Mr. Man, Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, we had a discussion yesterday about, the Chile Line also has buses that will pick up and home and come back and take you to the hospital. It only has a range of those, and I can't remember what it is, but you checked with our Transportation Department. But if you don't, aren't able to take them, you might want to refer them or call Chile Line and see if they can provide a transport, because we do have a handicap buses for that purpose. And we're required under our federal contract to provide those services as well. And so I want to make sure that that becomes available because sometimes people don't realize that there's more options than one to take care of those needs. So we are restricted as far as how far we go from, I can't remember if it's a mile or two miles within a district area of the line, the normal line. So whatever, we checked with our Transportation Department and they can help you with that, so. And that's on French.
Certainly, that would certainly help our midtown route because that's the one that's really expanded quite a bit. So I will get together with French on that one. But thank you for the information.
So, Councilman Peralta, just want to clarify this. If I'm an elder in need of getting to see my doctor, all I need to do is call the Chile Line and they'll pick me up. And that's a normal fee.
I don't even think there's a fee.
Okay.
If you're handicapped.
Okay.
But don't take a risk or check to make sure. But we do have that service that we're supposed to be doing and we do do it, but I don't know whether it's being totally utilized or not.
Right.
Well, if there isn't a fee, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilor, I certainly wouldn't want to charge our seniors for providing that service. I think by our agreement with our provider in Mitchell, on aging, we need to provide those services for free, so.
And Mr. Mayor, you're still the Chair of the RTD?
Correct, that's why I was in.
Right, so a question I'd have for you, and thank you, Mike, and I appreciate the Council's patience with men. If you live outside of the town of Taos, maybe two miles off the line, so to speak, up in that realm, will the RTD now pick you up and get you to the doctor? Have we solved that problem?
At this present time, there's not a door-to-door service. We just implemented that door-to-door service in Espaola and there's not a door-to-door service here yet. That's something that we're working on. And there is a bunch of planning going on, there's a planning meeting coming up, long-range planning. We're looking 20 to 30 years down the road. But just recently, on March 16th, our first bus will start running from up to Tres Pereles and they'll have a stop on Colorado Road, will have a stop at the post office in Tres Pereles. Then they'll have a stop at Colorado Road, they'll have a stop at Montoso, I think it's called, Montoso Road. They'll have a stop at the gorge bridge and then it will stop at the, what's the church out here that hosts the food?
The St. James.
St. James.
The St. James.
Methodist.
Yeah, it'll stop there and then it'll come into the county courthouse. So that's a new route. It's been, just on a, right now it's on a trial basis. It's one day a week and it starts on the 16th, so. There's a lot of people that'll be riding that. But again, Councilor, we don't have that door-to-door service within the county yet, but again, you know, it's a matter of dollars and cents. I'll try to do anything we can to bring more services to our community.
Well, I notice on the calendar on the 18th, there's an NSRT board here, board making here.
That's for long-range planning, or is that? Oh, we have, I have one, myself and Mr. Ballas and Councilman Peralta has been invited by the FCR TD to meet with them. Like, that's the meeting you're talking about?
I'm not sure. Just like I said, the 18th of February, 10th, 12th, here.
No, I don't think so.
Or is it the 12th?
Yeah. Oh, that's, I'm not sure. We'll see if we can do that and we'll get it clarified for you, Councilor.
Right, well, it's great to hear that we're making progress and then I can refer elders in my neighborhood who may be left and go through you, Mike, or call the Chile Line direct. And then for those of our neighbors outside, maybe contact the blue bus and see how close they're coming right now and then as things evolve. Because I've got some other folks who don't drive but do need to get to the doctor, get to work, that kind of thing, so.
Great. Thank you, Councilor. Councilwoman?
I love when you come to report to us, Mike. I think that the county does such a wonderful job with the Ansiamas and they're so important. And it sounds like you have some good lobbyists there.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. We're trying. As I said, it's been a learning experience. It's, out of all the departments I've managed in the county in the last 20 years and state government, this has got to be the most difficult one I've ever had to manage. But it's actually been the most rewarding because you are helping our elderly and our seniors. So it's an important, it's a very important program and it's important that we take care of our seniors.
Yeah, thank you.
So we thank you all too.
Did you get your buses picked up yet?
No, actually, Mr. Mortiero sent me an email that they were going to bring them up and transport them to us, so.
Oh, you're going to bring them up?
That was my understanding, but I'll follow up with them. And it's great, they're 12 passengers and eight passengers, so it's great that we don't need a CDL driver for them because, again, we don't have the funds to hire a CDL.
They both have lifts.
Yeah, they have lifts. So that's good news for us and our seniors, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mike. Take care.
Thank you. So then we'll go ahead and 14, we have manager reports from the council? Anything?
I said what I needed to say about the streets when French was here.
Thank you. So, that, Councilman, some, oh, call ahead, Councilman.
No, I was just going to move to the executive session. So you could have your cake, eat it too.
I've got nothing to report on IGC and landfill. I did present to the Council this idea of having a summit with important community partners. The idea behind the summit would be to triage our regions' needs, pulling together the appropriate representatives from Taos, Quetlán, town manager, maybe a couple of counselors, the head of finance, county manager. And I'd like to formally request that staff write a letter of inquiry to all of our regional partners. There are many out there and so I think before we send this letter out, we really need to look at that list and make sure we've got everybody. The purpose of this, what I'm going to call a summit, is really to brainstorm a triage, number one. Number two, begin to assess which conditions are worse than. Number three, you know, can that governmental entity handle a cross or are they going to need help? So I haven't completely flushed it out, but I would like to, after bringing this up two weeks ago, request that staff write a letter to all of our partners. So I'm looking at Linda right now. Linda is our branch writer, should be there. There's some citizens who would like to be there. It doesn't have to be a huge emotional meeting, but do I need to say anymore?
Councilman Peralta, I'm, Councilman, huh, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, you know, I know a lot of it is hinging on what happens with the legislature this year because I know the hospital is that one twelfth money that is being, you know, kicked around down the street or something. I don't know what they're doing with it. But I think that's going to make a big difference on the hospital's viability. And I would say, yes, let's reach out to all the different entities and start moving the process forward and trying to get, see if anybody's interested. But the people that are really going to have to carry this is going to have to be the county because it's going to have to be a county-wide and it'll all be, you know, implemented through the county because it either have to be, you know, a county-wide G R T or it's going to be county-wide property tax or anything that we are looking for to try to raise money for the different organization will be county-wide. So I think we need to really kind of see if we have the players involved, you know. Is a county willing to sit at the table and discuss this? Is the hospital, all the key players, you know, the Bill Duquesta? So I think we just need to get that letter out, like you said, and see who's willing to really play ball and do we want to do this before the legislature's legislative session is over? Or do we want to wait till after it's over so we know where everybody's going to stand, you know, as far as, you know, at least the hospital and possibly, you know, the different organizations. You know, the Duquesta might be in a better place too, depending on what's funded and what's not.
Mr. Mayor, as well as the whole courtless provisions that are currently under legislation?
Well, I'm looking for suggestions, but, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those observations. I understand the feeling with all of our infrastructure needs, not only here in the town and county, that we really need to get aggressive about this. And even if we start some preliminary meetings to wait for the legislature to end, that's great. I really, I've consulted a little bit with manager and our commissioner and others out in the community. But I'd be happy to do whatever it takes. I can create a sample letter, a sample list and bring it back to the Council. Whatever it takes to begin to address and triage our regions' infrastructure needs. So I stand ready to serve in whatever way you and the Council feel is most appropriate.
Councilor, I think if you brought that, that sample letter and a list of those that you think should be involved and then we can try to, you know, get that addressed and maybe we can start at least informally having, you know, or formally having people, you know, that are interested start to attend.
So I'll have, if it's all right, I usually meet with manager attorney every Monday at 2:00. By the way, that's open to anybody from all councils. And I'll bring a letter then, if that's all right with you, Mr. Ballas, Mr. Lopez, and we can start down that handy road. Does that work?
We might want to involve the IGC also.
Yes, and I sit on that. That's a great idea. A couple other quick matters. The Health Study Committee at Holy Cross is voted unanimously last week to ask the Holy Cross Board to expedite the timeline for its RFQ/RFP process for management at the hospital, or not the management consultant at the hospital. And we're also hoping that the Board will consider widening its search from for-profit managers to all alternatives out there. We'll see what the Holy Cross Board, how the Holy Cross Board responds to our request or may need, I believe this turns out in this month. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anything else? Not matters and reports, excuse me, executive session, water rights, executive and public session will be heard under 10151H8. We have a motion to go into executive session?
I move it by executive session after we cut the cake.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Discussion.
Discussion?
We'll get through executive session if we save the cake for after that.
I think he'll take it home after that.
Yes.
Has our question?
Yes, Councilor.
Yes.
Move we come out of executive session?
We have a motion and a second? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alba?
Yes.
Councilmember Cano?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
We'll turn to our town attorney for her reporting.
Mr. Member, members of the Council, we went into executive session to discuss the discussion considerations and decision regarding the purchase of water rights. I've made a discussion in closed session under open and exact exemption, 10151H8, which allows the discussion of purchase after using the disposal of water rights. No other matters to discuss and no actual stake.
Motion to accept the report of the town attorney? Move. Second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Alba?
Yes.
Councilmember Cano?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
And a motion to adjourn? Move. Second?
Second.
All favor?
Yes.